And Vice President Larry Scott, we decided we would work together and bring data to inform us of how things are going. The data that Dr. Sharon Brown, the Chief of Student Support Services, and Darlene Jezzynowski, the Chief of School Leadership, are going to share with us the suspension data and the attendance data. And all of us know that is so crucial in our mission for student achievement. So I'm going to let Dr. Williams do the introduction and we'll get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Shuda. You're absolutely right in saying that it really is through effective Student Support Services and, you know, working closely with our schools that we can begin to see some improvement in student achievement. You know, students have to be in school, they have to be ready to learn, the behaviors, you know, have to support learning. And, you know, the way that we do that effectively and begin to change things is through looking at data. And I'm just really pleased to say that, you know, within our cabinet and on our team, that is something we're focusing on in every area. Because for a long time, we've looked at data instructionally and not so much through Student Support Services and things like attendance and suspensions. And so I think tonight, I'm really excited about the fact that you're going to see not only, you know, cabinet members who will be sharing, but also some schools, some principals, where the rubber hits the road, sharing. And so it's a win-win when you have them working in sync together. So with that being said, I'm going to turn things over to the team. I think Dr. Brown is going to start, and she'll be followed up by Chief Jezzynowski, and they'll introduce other members who will be presenting.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Williams, colleagues, and listening audience. And I will just lay it into the PowerPoint. Thank you. So I, along with Chief Jezzynowski and Principals Cook, Patel, Vanderlip, and Womack, will share overall student attendance and suspension data and how our students are progressing as we guide them along the student success journey. Next slide, please. So we always begin with a focus on Dr. Williams' five goals by 2025. And so for today's presentation, we will primarily focus on Goal Three, Priorities of Safety, Security, and Wellness; and Goal Four, Amplify All Voices in Cultivating Trust. Next slide, please. So we know that attendance is certainly a priority. We know that first day and every day, we want our students in school. And so we are working collectively to support our students and families to increase student attendance. Next slide, please. As I prepare and to present a few data slides and not to take up too much time, as we know there are other presenters that will follow me, but it really is important for me to convey that when my team and I discuss district-wide supports, we always begin with data. Because it really removes the subjectivity. And so Dr. Rachel Dominguez, she is our Program E evaluator for the Division of Student Support Services, and she pulls data from the wonderful data dashboard created by the Office of Shared Accountability and that team. They did a phenomenal job. I don't know too many districts that have a database the way that we do. And they are definitely under the leadership of Chief Bullock. And so when we pull other, and she pulls other relevant data points and disaggregates it, and that really informs us, and she shares it on a weekly, she shares it on a weekly basis with the two Assistant Superintendents and myself, and the two Assistant Superintendents are Orniece Hill and Tina Jackson. And then we also share that data with the Directors and Supervisors so that we can make informed decisions, because that's really important. And we make those decisions for district-wide programming, coaching that's offered, and then we also conduct targeted school visits. So we know that COVID-19 has had a huge impact on students and adults. And it's an unfortunate reality, and it's really caused a lot of trauma, in some cases an increase in violence. And the decrease in attendance is not just unique to Buffalo. And based on the research, these attendance trends have been observed in schools across the country. And we felt that it was important to share some of the trend data, beginning with the 2018-19 school year. This provides you with a historical context. So this was just prior to the pandemic, and we started at the 87.75%. We're not happy with our attendance numbers. We know there's work to do. However, as you will see throughout the presentation, that we are seeing progress. And the next year, we started to get some traction. We were at almost 92%. So in the 1920 school year, that's when the pandemic hit. And so in March of 2020, everyone went remote, and that really changed a lot during that time. Because we did not have our students with us. There were some students who entered school for the very first time in person at the grade, second grade. So when all students were remote, as you can see, that 75.88% in 2020-21 school year, that was the first full year of the pandemic. And students were remote for the majority of the school year, I believe it was in March, when there were a few students from each school that started coming back in person. And some of them had a hybrid model. And then the following year, 21-22, was the full year, full in-person year that we had, which again was a very challenging year for us and for students across the country. But we did see some gains, 78.56. And then this school year to date, we're at 83.33. So we are starting to raise our attendance again, not where we want it to be, but we are getting there. And also something to note, the attendance-taking procedure did change in the fall of 2020. So that was a huge transition. And also for that 2020-21 school year, again, the record-keeping looked different, our students were on remote, some of them were very ill, their families. And so all of that had an impact as we looked at our students in the building. Some of them had isolation quarantine orders, which really had a huge impact on capturing that data in the way that we wanted it to. Next slide, please. So here you will see the attendance from September through February of last year and September to February of this year, to give you a view side-by-side. So the blue bars you'll see, that is for the 21-22 school year, yellow is for this year. So you can see for each month, and what we wanted to do is to show you each month, just so that you'll have a different view in terms of what our attendance looked like. So in September, we started off stronger than we did the prior year, and we are showing increases every month with the exception of November. You see December was a huge increase, January was a huge increase, and February, we did much better. Next slide, please. Okay, so our Student Code of Conduct. As you all know, we revised our Code of Conduct, and it was implemented in September 22nd. A lot of stakeholder feedback. And this is our district-wide plan so that we can develop safe and supportive schools, which is very, very important to us. And this document is, if you will, the blueprint, the guide, is how we engage with our students and families. And this is the guide that schools use when they're engaging with the students. Make sure that's the right slide. Okay, so the next, I'm sorry. So the next slide that you'll see, again, we just want to provide you with trend data. Again, this is our suspension data. So the orange color is for short-term suspensions, brown is for long-term. As you see in 1819, prior, just prior to the pandemic, and again, our suspensions were high, but as you can see, we're moving in the right direction. The following year, 1920, we were trending in the downward suspensions, a downward trend in 2019-20. Again, as a reminder, the kids went on remote in March of 2020. 2020 to 2021, of course, very few suspensions because most of the students were remote for the entire school year. And then 21-22, as you can see, prior to the pandemic, we are significantly lower. And 22-23 year to date, we have significantly decreased suspensions, when you see the trend data. Next slide, please. Okay, so this data that you'll see here is, the green data shows us the percentage of students who are unsuspended. And orange will show the students who are suspended. When you see this view, it gives you a really good picture in terms of the percentage of students who are actually in school and who are staying in school. Because again, we have over 32,000 students, and sometimes when you hear about suspensions, you begin to think it's happening to most of our students. And we can see here that that is not the case. So as you can see in September, I'm sorry, in 21-22 school year, as opposed to 22-23, and we have the races broken down, you can see that we have a higher percentage of students who are remaining in the school. And also, when we look at the work that comes out of Dr. Morell's office, you know, excellent work, we're continuing, we're continuing to work on disproportionality, and the schools are doing an excellent job with that. So again, when you look at the data, and again, we meet as a data team, and there was a recent publication that was released that really focused on one month from this school year to one month last year, and they extracted that data, which gives the impression that our suspensions are much higher. So while it's definitely important to look at month by month, because we do want to see those trends, we do want to see what is going on in some of our schools and how we can support them. What we're finding out is that there can be several factors, maybe in some cases with attendance, the bus may have been late, or something major happened in the school that caused a spike that month. So we like to look at overall data, we like to look at it holistically as well, so that we can get a clear picture of how we're doing across the years. Next slide, please. And I won't read everything on this slide, so this is just some of the district support. And I know from our office, the Division of Student Support Services, we have district-wide restorative practice training, we have four coaches in our division who are assigned to a school, and they provide professional development, modeling, and shadowing restorative conferences, circles. We're really increasing our academic circles, because that's really important to us to infuse that during the academic day and not just have a period in time where there's social-emotional learning. We also have multi-tier systems of support this year. We have full-day Saturday trainings for all of the schools' teams, and also all of the schools have identified a wellness team, so we provide ongoing support through those full-day professional development, and they also get support during the school day. Social-emotional learning curriculum, we have that with Second Step. We have a social-emotional learning scale that we collaborated with the Special Ed. Department under Anne Botticelli, and that's being piloted this year. And also, we have the CLRI under Dr. Morell, MBK, Big Sister, Little Sister, Office of Shared Accountability, they provide the schools with a lot of support when it comes to data and other areas. We have several community partners, and we also are looking to bring on more. You've seen the Compendium, you've seen the RFPQ out of Dr. Reynolds' office, we have Erie County Restorative Justice Coalition, we have Say Yes Mental Health, we have school-based clinics, mental health clinics, we have Community Solutions Foundations, Back to Basics, and the list goes on. Next slide, please. And then this is just some pictures of how the coaches went out to support schools. You see a circle there, a restorative, a circle time, a morning circle, you see a school wellness day, where schools and high schools are engaged, and the wellness teams and the wellness days. And now at this point, next slide, please, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Jezzynowski.
Good evening, esteemed Board Members, Dr. Williams, colleagues, and our listening audience. I'd like to share some of the interventions that are happening at the school level with attendance. And then I will have, I'll refer to two principals who will then talk about the great initiatives that they have that has increased their attendance at their schools. So first, we have PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, Ready-Freddy, Attendance Counts, and that's for pre-K and K. We do that at the beginning of the year, usually at the end of August, where we invite parents to come in. We have transportation where children can get acclimated to the school, meet their teachers, and see, and parents can visit students' classrooms. We have a buddy system. Schools have monthly celebrations where they highlight student success, such as award ceremonies, holiday dances and concerts. Principals do shout-outs during morning announcements for classrooms who have perfect attendance, field trips, amplify student voices, and, um, heroes, here every day, ready on time. Could you please turn to the next slide, Admir? And then we also have some Tier Two interventions. And the first one is evidence-based check-in, check-out for our elementary schools, and then check-and-connect for our high schools. Restorative circles, social-academic instructional groups, our SAG groups, requests for assistance. And then our Tier Three, where we do home visits, referrals to community-based providers, and family and student conferences. So right now, I'm going to, if you turn to the next slide, Admir. Principal Patel will discuss some of the initiatives that she has at her schools where she has increased student attendance from last year to this year. Principal Patel?
Good evening, Dr. Williams, esteemed Board Members, viewing members, our ASLs, and also my colleagues. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present today. I do want to say that the attendance that has increased at School 18 is really a community effort. Our parents do a wonderful job of ensuring that their children come to school every day. The attendance that happens in our building is really, it starts with kids coming to school. If they do not attend, our teachers make phone calls after two days. If they don't come after three days, our teachers put in requests for assistance. It is a document that is electronic, teachers fill it in, and it goes to our Tier Two meetings. Our Tier Two meeting happens once a cycle, and our team takes a look at the request for assistance and makes a decision as to how we can intervene for children who are missing school. Does the child need to go in check-in, check-out, and have someone recognize, hey, great job for coming to school? Does the parent at home need some assistance? Does it need to be me in the morning saying, hey, I missed you yesterday? Can we try two days in a row coming to school? It just makes a difference sometimes, just someone noticing that the child came two days in a row, three days in a row, four days in a row. So we really try and individualize, once the request for assistance goes in, what the program is that that individual child needs, so that we can increase that attendance for that particular child and make sure that the tiered intervention occurs.
Thank you, Principal Patel. Next, we will have Principal Cook, who will share his initiatives at his school as in regards to attendance. Principal Cook?
Thank you, and thank you to the Buffalo Board of Education for all your support and providing outstanding opportunities for our students, President Bowden Cotman, and of course Superintendent Dr. Williams. Again, I think we're at a time now where we have more supports than when we ever have. We have our entire community coming together, and that's really what I'm going to talk about tonight, the correlation between customer service and then those social-emotional supports. And if anybody at all has any questions or wants me to, you know, talk about anything any further, you know, please feel free to stop me. Okay, so Hamlin Park, Clodagh and Weetle Clap Academy seeks to continuously build and strengthen positive relationships with families, students, and community. And we try to utilize multiple avenues in doing this. Those avenues include Saturday Academy, our after-school ELT program, and of course, during the regular school day. The importance of relationship building, and especially, I use the word customer service, and I've witnessed a flawless model and execution by our own Superintendent Dr. Williams on what she's done with our community, and that's something that we try to replicate with our own school. And secondly to that, customer service should always be modeled by administration and set the expectation for all faculty members. Because as Principal Patel said, it is united, collective, and it needs to be a galvanized effort between the BTF, PACTA, food service, but it needs to start with the BCSA members, the principal in particular. What we do at Hamlin Park is we try to keenly listen to the needs of our parents, families, and students, truly listen. How could we serve you? And that helps reestablish trust in our families to the school, because as we all know, historically, some of our families might not trust and have had a great experience within the Buffalo schools. So it's our responsibility now to turn that around and make sure that that positive relationship is reestablished. Emotional and physical safety is paramount. Follow-up on both student and family concerns, that means reaching out until everything is closed and both parties are satisfied. The kids know who they can trust in the building, having that continuity year-to-year, having caring teachers and caring faculty, you can't fake the kids. The kids are going to know who they could come to, who they confide in, and our goal is to have a safety net for every child in this building. I ask children all the time, who do you go, who's your go-to person? Unfortunately, sometimes they list three, four, or five members of our faculty, and that's something that we try to, you know, replicate and, you know, provide assistance to. Additional supports. At Hamlin Park, we have a clothing dresser for students to access multiple things, hoodies during very cold days if the children are cold, food access through the backpack program, and even with our, we have a fabulous nurse. She provides toiletry supplies for both family and students when needed. We utilize multi-tiered wraparound services, community connections for families, including counseling, training, and navigating different programs within the community. With President Cotman and Canisius College in collaboration with President Stout, we've, you know, reestablished great relationships with our local university. Our goal is, they have been sponsoring our students and families over the holidays. Additionally, our students in the springtime will be going down to the athletic fields and having access to world-class university programs. So that's something that we're very proud of in collaboration, again, with President Cotman and the Hamlin Parks Taxpayers Association. And then the second component to this is just a few things we do for social-emotional, positive behavior reinforcement is enjoyed by everybody, right? It's enjoyed by adults, and it's certainly enjoyed by children. So we have building-wide recognition, and most importantly, we model what the instructional and behavioral expectations are. One of my favorite things, what I always try to do when I work with all my teachers and reiterate the importance of positive phone calls to families. I have families, I've had, you know, mothers and fathers and guardians out there that have literally dropped the phone. I said, I'm just calling you today. And sometimes I purposely pause, and I'll say, you know, I just want to call and let you know your son or daughter has been doing outstanding. Whatever you're doing at home, please continue to reinforce that because it's working. So let's work on this together. And there's a lot of love out there, and they, almost all of our adults within the Buffalo community want to see their children, the people they love, do well and succeed, and just have an opportunity. And of course, we have our restorative circles, and just things kids love, right? Sometimes it just comes down to the basics. They love enhanced enrichment programs, YZ. We have a dance program, and this is all provided through the Buffalo Public Schools and the Board of Education. YZ, we have two days of full dance, we have a dance teacher working with our children that truly love dance, and we know how much, you know, how popular that is in our community. We have a band program, we have an additional art teacher, and just some fun things, music in the cafeteria on Fridays, I get some kickback for that, but it's something I enjoy as well, and the kids absolutely love it. Pizza with the principal, after-school yoga, Girl Scouts, and just making it a fun, caring, and loving environment. And lastly, kids love to see themselves, they love to walk in the building, and we have, again, provided by the board, we have a TV, and the kids see their pictures of doing positive things. We have recycling team, helping others, caring, what could you do for others? How could you, you know, be a caring person? And soon as the students come in, they see themselves not only in the bulletin board, or the bulletin boards, but, you know, as they walk past that TV screen every day. So, you know, kids love to see themselves. And the things that, just to reiterate some of the things that I shared today, is this is all stemmed from simple, grassroots, organic things, building positive, trusting, and sustained relationships with all members and all stakeholders in the Hamlin Park community. Thank you.
I'd normally never interrupt, but I just want us to congratulate, this is now Dr. Patrick Cook, and I want us to just recognize that.
All right, Pat, congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, thank you, Principal Patel. And this really, this initiative really has been set forth by Dr. Williams, who really has set the bar on having 85% attendance at all our schools this year, raising it to 87% next year, and 90% by '24-25. Next slide, please. So let's talk about some interventions and prevention for suspensions. And that really starts at the district level with Student Support Services that all principals have access to. So in Lewis Suspension Meetings, check-in, check-out, our SAG groups, mentoring, functional behavioral assessments, behavior support plans, problem-solving teams, wraparound services, culturally-relevant restorative practices, fostering positive relationships, morning meetings, student advisories, student ambassadors, conflict resolution, peer mediation, and restorative practices, such as circles, community service, community conferences. Next slide, please, Admir. So you can see highlighted in yellow, everything that schools are doing, they really, they start at the district level, but they also have some added initiatives that they have at their schools, such as Saturday academies, counseling, individual and family, lunch bunch, Second Step SCL lessons, anti-bullying campaigns, and advisory groups. And now we're going to have a few principals present on the initiatives at their school, which really have impacted suspensions, and we've seen a significant decrease at these schools in number of suspensions from last year to this year. And the first principal that will present, next slide, please, Admir, will be Principal Vanderlip. Principal Vanderlip?
Hey, good evening, folks. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm very humbled to be before you, Superintendent Williams, and esteemed Board Members. The support that you've provided in your decision-making has made the work that we're doing here possible. At Hillary Park, we have a pledge that we say every morning, and the pledge ends with, at Hillary Park Elementary, everyone achieves, no exceptions, no excuses. And our community has bought into that ideal. And you heard Dr. Patel talk about, about the importance of community, and that really is the reason for our success. I think about Dr. King's book, Chaos or Community, and it really comes down to that, what are we going to have in our school building? Are we going to have a community here? And is that community going to reach out to all areas and all corners of this beautiful city? Or are we going to allow chaos to happen? We do not allow that happen here at Hillary Park. Our kids are far too deserving of better, and it's our job to make sure that we continue to provide them better. And it really starts with And it really starts with climate, the climate of your building, and the way that students perceive school. It's a warm, welcoming school environment that children know that they're going to come here, they're going to experience kindness, they're going to be loved, and they're going to be supported at every level. Part of the belief system, you know, is what our culture is, right? It's what we believe in. We do believe that all children can and will learn, and it takes every bit of effort to make that happen. Children can't learn if they're not here. So when you have reluctant learners, or students that have some impulse control issues, or what have you, suspending them and sending them home is not the answer. It is not going to produce a better student when upon their return. We currently have a 1.75 suspension rate. So that means that 98.25 of our students have never been suspended. We have had 11 short-term suspensions here this year. Eight of those were for one day, and three of those were for two days. We have had three long-term suspensions that were a result of some violent actions that required a different level of intervention that led to some of those formal suspensions. We don't suspend without putting great thought and great a great degree of effort in there. So the other C on top of culture and climate and community that I want to add to is a continuum. We've heard folks talk about tier-one interventions. Tier-one is where it's at. That is for everybody. It's how we are, expectations that we set in this building. And to me, the higher the expectation, the more respect you're showing to those students. The most authentic form of respect is a high level of expectations. Our children can learn at the highest levels. They can perform at the highest levels. And we need to back them up on that and show them that every day, even when they don't believe it themselves. Tier-two is making sure that we have the support in place. And our board and the budget that we've created, I've been able to add one and a half social workers. So we have it every other day. That's the half. But that increase in support has meant everything to the numbers that you're seeing. When we have skilled professionals in the area of social work that can work with families and children, hands-on, in real time, it makes a miraculous difference, simply put. And then finally, you know, we, students want to be here. And the things that we put back into place that we're missing. So our after-school program, modified sports, MBK. We, students want to be here. Hillary Park was, and we're so, so, super proud of, we're the only school that had both of our basketball teams, boys and girls, in the Final Four. And that just, you know, I'll quote JFK, "A, you know, a rising tide raises all ships." And that's the type of sense, and that's the culture that you want to have here, where students want to be here. They understand what they may have to lose, that they're not willing to buy in, and that's it. There's no exceptions. There's no excuses here. And we look forward to continuing this great work, and thank you for all your support.
Thank you, Principal Vanderlip. Board members, you have now heard from elementary schools. Now you're going to hear from a principal of a high school, Principal Womack. Next slide, please, Amir. Principal Womack. You may be muted, Principal Womack. Maybe she's having some technical difficulties, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Brown, and I'll see if I can get Principal Womack on.
Thank you. If you could advance the slide. Amir. So just in summary, and I know that we're waiting for Principal Womack, but again, we definitely looked at the research, just to ensure if we're on the right track. As you heard from the principals, it's all about building the relationships, it's having those structures, those tier-one supports. But what we found in the summary of the literature review is that positive district-wide trends for both attendance and suspension data, I'm sorry, that supports, that is what we're seeing in our data. In terms of across the states, they're not seeing as many trends moving in the same upward motion for attendance and the decrease in suspension. And these gains are despite the growing body of evidence that suggests the persistent and pervasive impact of COVID-19 on Black and Brown students. And what we found in the research, too, is that it is also having an impact on non-Black students as well, because trauma doesn't know a race, it doesn't know socioeconomic status, trauma is real, and COVID-19 has truly had an impact, and has disadvantaged schoolchildren across the country. And then research indicates that continued work to increase attendance and decrease suspensions will be most effective if mental health and wellness supports are robust and ongoing. And you heard all of the principals, the majority of the principals, and they said just that in terms of the relationships they build, the social supports that they build in their schools. And is Ms. Womack that? No, okay. So I'll just finish. And so I just, we just want to end by just stating that it really takes teamwork. As you see here, you know, the different tiered supports. We know that it takes the parents and the district in partnership with the education bargain, and we know the student needs... Okay, we know that the student needs to be involved, district support, school support, community. All of us have to work together, and so what we are looking to do is deepen the work that we're already doing, because we want to make sure that we keep our students in school. Our kids are more than a number. There's a story behind each and every child. We do constantly looking at the quantitative data, but the qualitative data is also very important. And as Principal Vanderlip said, our kids want to be in school. They want to engage with us, and we want to make sure that we have the interventions and support, and we're happy that we're moving in the right direction. So I'm going to pause now unless Principal Womack is in. If not, we're open to questions, and thank you.
Okay. Great presentations. I appreciate the time and effort you put into presenting today. I have a few things I want to ask. I see with attendance that a lot of the things we were doing, that we are doing, were things we were doing pre-COVID. And so I'm wondering, has there been any thought? I know that the kids that, in my practice, there were the kids that came to high school and had very bad attendance in seventh and eighth grade. And as they transitioned into high school, we saw the same thing. So I'm wondering if we can take a look at perhaps developing a program where we take a look at those high-risk eighth graders and kind of do some kind of bridge to make the adjustment to high school easier. You know, what I found, too, when it comes to student placement, I understand their school choice, but a kid that was going to school two blocks from his house and wasn't going, and then in high school, we're putting him on a bus to go two routes. So like, can we take a look at some kids and really like develop an individual program for some of our kids to find more success? That's one of my thoughts. And I think that what I'll do is I will go around to my my board members and let them have an opportunity. Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown?
Good evening. You would have to choose me first, Ms. Shura. Thank you. But, you know, my thought with your comment, you know, when we look at attendance, there's triggers with children as young as second grade. And so the trends ought to be started there in terms of attendance, in terms of behaviors, and, you know, all that stuff. And I think the district does have something in place, because I remember back in, a few years ago, there were some software or something that was brought, you know, to sort of capture what you were just talking about. But nevertheless, I think all of the presentations were spot-on, you know, from the principals in particular, because children really get it. When they come in those schools, they need to feel like they're wanted, they're engaged, people care about them, and so forth. And it's a mindset that has to happen. It does start from the leader, you know, the leader. I know when I did my research and dissertation, there's a subtle link from leadership to children's success in completing high school. It's there. And so I applaud all of the principals today who have environments that are welcoming to our young people. And I know for myself, my kids never wanted to leave school. They were in sports, they loved their teachers, they loved their friends, and they would have me waiting for them, you know, for hours to go home. So I applaud all of you who are doing the work, because it's important. And one of the principals mentioned that they had a very small percentage of suspension rate, that 1.75%, which is excellent, because, you know, let the naysayers talk about it, you know, Buffalo has the highest suspension rate in this country, which is not true. So, and I like the graph, Dr. Brown, that you put out, because it really shows a different view of suspensions compared to kids who are in school. So I applaud all of you. Thank you so much for your presentation and continue to do work.
Madam Chair, is it possible to hear from the high school principal now that she's on the...
That would be great. Sure.
I would love to hear that. Thank you.
Okay.
Everyone, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for inviting me tonight. Thank you, Dr. Williams, for your leadership, and thank you for asking me to speak tonight. For President Kotman, I want to thank you, too. You've been a partner with MST High School, and whenever we need anything, you are one of the first people we call, because you show up for us, and we thank you. So tonight I was asked to speak about how we are lowering our suspension rates and some of the things that we're doing here at MST. I want to kind of just start, I know I only have two minutes, but I want to give you kind of a backstory on us. I've been at MST as an administrator. This is my fifth year. And prior to my arrival at MST, there were over 34 administrators in a 10-year span. So it wasn't a lot of stability at the high school. And when I came, some of the things that we did was, we started backwards planning in terms of what did we want to experience for our teachers and our students? What did we want to do? So we were very intentional and purposeful about what we did. The first thing we did was a mind shift, a mindset shift for our faculty. And this is a practice that we've continued. We do what's called book studies, and we use Monica Capozzi and Christina Jackson from our student support office. And what they do is they provide us with two-part book studies. This year, we are doing Carol Dweck's book, Growth Mindset. And right now, we're currently reading Sean Aker's book, The Happiness Advantage. This is the month of March. We just started on March 4th with the part one, and March 25th is our part two. In prior years, we did What Happened to You? It's Dr. Bruce Perry's book with Oprah Winfrey. We did Fostering Resilient Learners. So we spent a lot of time getting teachers prepared for what they are going to experience when they enter our classrooms and have interactions with our parents and our students. We wanted teachers to really come from a trauma-informed lens. We are a very restorative school. All of our teachers have been trained on restorative justice and trauma-informed care. Our foundation at the school is love. We do mediations. We have student ambassadors. We have a very active tier-one team. And our tier-one team ties every activity that we do at the school level to a data point. And we are one of few high schools in the city that has a full-time EWI, which is an early warning indicator facilitator. So she's often holding EWI meetings with parents and teachers to ensure that students are doing what they need to do. Her focus areas are academics, behavior, and attendance. And we just are very intentional and purposeful about the work. We do not want to work in silos. We want to make sure that our work is centered around data, in that we are collectively sharing and having discussions about what is working and what is not working. If you have any questions, I always invite people to our school to see our work, because we're not perfect, but we're moving the ship in the right direction. We're constantly looking at data. We're constantly having conversations. Our partnership with our CBOs is important. I say President Kotman because she's just linked us with another CBO. And it's a need. It's a constant effort to get better every day. So I invite questions or comments, and you are always welcome to MST High School to see the work that we're doing.
Congratulations. It sounds like things are going well, and we appreciate it. President Beltman Kotman, would you like to?
Well, I want to say thank you. This has been very interesting. I appreciate the effort that staff is making to provide us the data. I do, however, would appreciate in the future if we can drill down and we know who we're talking to. So when our principals present to us, let them tell us a little bit about their building, what their, what, how many, you know, what students, how many special ed students? Just share a little bit about it before they go into it, so we can have a better understanding. Kudos to Principal Womack, because this is your first year, isn't it? So kudos to you. I want to thank all the principals. But the biggest, I personally wanted to ask the principals, all of them, what is their biggest challenges at this point? Because if, as a board, as we start doing our budget planning, we want to know what we can do to help you be better. And I think that's really where I'm going today. I would like to see in our first half of the presentation, the data desegregated, brought down, because, Dr. Williams, this ties into your goals. And if we can start focusing in on the piece that ties into your goals as far as the improvements that are needed, then we can see in three months if that has improved or whatever, and that puts us on the path using data to drive us to the next level. And then that sends the message out to the ASLs and to the principals and to the teachers, that the board is watching us, and they're here, and they want to make sure that we're improving, and they're interested in providing resources to help us. But this has been a fantastic presentation to the principals. Keep on keeping on. My other suggestion is, is that someone said the other day, and it made a lot of sense, that we need to work on our best practices being highlighted and being used. So if you have a principal who is achieving certain things, and then you have another principal who is not, don't you think somewhere in that equation that they need to, need some help to get to the next level? And their best practice? And their best practices would be that, I would think. We're not trying to take their autonomy away, but it's like, if you don't use the science kit and you don't get good science results, then we need to make sure that you're using the science kit. So I'd just like to see what their challenges are, if they would like to share, not necessarily this, but in an email to us if they don't feel comfortable doing it in public. But we want to know what we can do as a board to help you get to the next level. That's what we're here for. Thank you. Appreciate it. Look at him. Vincent Vanderlip came back on the screen.
I just ran for a month, I just ran for the after-school program.
Okay, all right.
You know, I was able to visit there for a parent night, and I think it was two or three weeks ago, and what a beautiful atmosphere, what a beautiful feeling, and the parents were thrilled, the teachers were thrilled, the kids were happy. So I appreciate you're in the Park District. And I hope that, you know, that, and I know, and I, Patrick Cook was one of my teachers, and I know his fire for what he's doing, and it's just so appreciative of all the principals that presented tonight. Is there, you know, we have about five minutes left. Is there someone who would like to speak? Does anybody have anything that they'd like to say? Mr. Scott, Dr. Rivera, Ms. Woods? Okay.
I was very impressed with Principal Vincent Vanderlip, what you, what you said about just reaching out to those children, making the atmosphere warm and loving, and also knowing that sending a child home never helps. That municipal suspension and working with them, that's, you never send them home. That, that's just, that was powerful for me. And the other principal, I believe it was Danielle, just working with those, each of those kids and never giving up. And I just want to say the supports that the superintendent has put in place with all our community agencies around our kids with love, it's making a difference. And, you know, it's, it's old saying, people don't care what you, how much you know until they know how much you care. That's still always true. Thank you.
Mr. Scott, and then we'll go to Mr. Hurd.
Yeah, just quickly, want to thank Dr. Brown, Chief Jozanowski, and their team for the presentation, just being very upfront with where we are. And just want to reiterate that the issues with attendance, the issues with suspension are national trends. They're trends throughout the state. They're trends in suburban districts. And in fact, I believe we're defying some of these trends with suspension, last year and this year. And if you look at, if we were to dig deep into some suburban districts, you would find that that is not the trend. And that's not what we're hearing in the news. That's not what's being reported on. It's not what people are writing op-eds on. And so I'm glad that we're being upfront and we're seeing some progress. We have a lot of work to do, but I'm glad we're seeing some progress. And I also want to commend you on including the principals today. I thought that was a very different approach and refreshing, and it was helpful to hear what's going on in our schools instead of just us in a boardroom, us on our screens here, to hear. And I, it seems as if the decision to include these principals was based on the data and what's, what we're seeing that's promising in the data or improvements in the data. And, correct me if I'm wrong, it's four non-criteria-based schools. So I commend that approach, and I commend the four principals that are here that took the time to talk about the good work that you're doing in each of your buildings. So thank you, everybody.
Mr. Hurd? If I may just interject, I'm sorry, I have to. It is a mindset that has been set from the leadership of this district that is taking hold. So it starts there.
Great. Mr. Hurd?
What a difference a year makes. I had to throw that in.
First of all, I'd like to thank Sharon Brown on East Hill, Tina Jackson, and Mr. Jozanowski, you know, that elevated to these new roles and doing the fantastic work in this district. Also, I'd like to certainly thank our principals, Patelli, our newly Dr. Cook and Beverly Pell. Congratulations. And it's just some interesting things that we have. Did some research now, and I look back at 2015 when President Barack Obama, he signed into law, it was Every Student Succeed Act, and that required every state to publish material about suspensions and attendance in schools. And we know that when Donald Trump was president in 2020, he rolled it back, saying that this district wasn't reporting this information back to federal government and/or to the state, and that it was negligent. It was a negligent act of form. But I'm glad this district is reporting. I know today we was given statistics and percentages, but if you go to the website, for those who haven't had the opportunity, you can see our data on our Buffalo Public Schools website, usually in the bottom left-hand corner. So you want to see the data for each school and see wonderful work that our principals are doing in our schools along with our support teams. Mr. Vanderlip, I love that you said sports was a very, very critical issue in your building because we work very hard with our modified sports programs to try to get our kids interested in school. It's one thing that we use and every team to build these programs. In our elementary program, we hope to see that suspension data, you know, go down. We hope to see better environments. We know that we got Buffalo, that two principals, we deal with the highest issues in this city of Buffalo than we do any other place in the country. I mean, we go from, from, from snowstorms to ice storms to gang violence. We got terrorism, we got COVID, we got sexual harboring. There's really high impact in this area, and just everyday lives. And, hell, we just deal with an earthquake. So everything happens here in Buffalo, and we know that it comes into the building, and as a board, we want to do everything that we can. We know that every child is different, and that we got to teach every child and family as individuals. But thank you for what you're doing, and continue on with the work. If anything I can do or we can do to help, please just let me know.
Dr. Rivera, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I think the only thing I'd like to add, first of all, I'd like to uplift everybody else's comments. I completely agree with them, and I appreciate all the work you're doing with this. The only thing that I think that I'd like to add is as we have all of these initiatives across the district, it might be useful for us to start drilling down into some areas where we can uplift those best practices and then help facilitate, in other words, giving time for our principals and our teachers to work with each other in order to expand some of the things that we're finding working, works in some schools to other schools. And I think a lot of that has to do with how we staff, how we support staff, and how we make time for that kind of sharing. But I think that might be helpful because it's clear to me, and it's been clear to me throughout my tenure on the board, is that we have, we have areas of real excellence and that the will is there to do this work. The next step is to think, okay, where isn't it working? And how do we help support those areas to get to where we want them to be and really where they want to be too? Our, you know, our personnel are engaged in this, and I think that would be my only addition to the conversation. I look forward to hearing more about that and seeing the work that you do on that next step.
Mrs. McCutcheon?
What I sit on, when you are in agreeance, you utter the word ditto. So I'm going to go ahead and ditto everything that my colleague said. Yeah, I got the thumbs up because I know we are at time. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Okay. Dr. Williams, is there anything you'd like to say?
I want to thank, you know, each one of the principals. I want to certainly thank my staff. You know, Buffalo Public Schools does not hide data. We do not hide data. We have embraced the data, and we're allowing the data to allow us to look at the narrative, what it's telling us. That's the only way that we change things, is to confront what it really is. And so what you heard tonight, you can be assured that that is what it really is. And I think, you know, it's really something when after COVID, after all that we know our children have gone through, we've all looked at some research and scholarship that talks about how difficult times are, when we begin to see that even though our attendance is certainly not where we want it to be, but it is rising, and we see that our suspensions are decreasing at the same time with all we're dealing with, we have to all be affirmed that we're going in the right direction. We are all rolling in the same direction. And I just, you know, I know how hard it is being a principal. I've been there, you know. But, you know, we've got four here, and we've got 56 others that are doing the hard work. And so even though it may have sounded like they just listed a whole lot of, you know, initiatives, each one of those things are complex, and it takes a lot of work to do any one of the things that they mentioned. So I just appreciate them. I appreciate the staff. I appreciate this board for all of the support that you provide to our schools. I think this was a great presentation.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you. Now I will turn it over to...
If I can just say one more thing, because Danielle Womack said something to me, and it has stuck with me. She said, you know, there are times that I do have to discipline students. I mean, you know, they're young, that's how they learn. But she always starts with, you know, I love you, right? And it's hard to argue with that. I mean, so you're a student, you've done something wrong, and your principal starts with, you know, I love you, right? So you know what's coming, but, but I do love you. You know, this is a teachable moment, and that has always stuck with me. So.
That's great. That's great. Okay. Mr. Scott, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board Member Shuda. And I want to thank Board Member Shuda for working together with me to, you know, share out all this important data from the student support end with attendance and suspension, and now some data on reading. Before I go forward, though, I just want to bring our attention to, today is International Women's Day. And I just want to recognize our superintendent, who is a brilliant woman and leader. Our board president, Sharon Beltman Kotman, who is a tenacious leader, and all of our women on this board, our cabinet members that are women, and so many of the women in our schools that are working directly with our kids on a daily basis, and our moms and grandparent, grandmas as well.
Thank you.
So I just want to say one thing before I turn it over to Dr. Williams, in that I commend this board and our superintendent especially, as she just said, for just being very upfront about our data, for having periodic discussions about our data, looking at it, not trying to run from it, facing it, being, noticing the positives, noticing what we need to work on. And I'm going to say it again, I've said it a few times. Show me another district, show me another board that's having conversations like this about data. Because to my knowledge, you won't even find districts that are doing this internally, let alone publicly like this, at a board meeting, at a work session that we're having. So I think it's notable that our board is doing this, continuing to do this, continuing to focus on students and student outcomes. And it starts with the leadership of Dr. Williams, so I thank you for that. Dr. Williams, go ahead.
Thank you so much, and I echo Happy International Women's Day to all of the women that are on this board and within the cabinet and within the district and whoever might be listening. So we have a great presentation, another one that's coming up by our chief academic officer. And, you know, we always hear about DIBELS, and I, you know, wonder if folks really know what DIBELS even stands for or what DIBELS really is. But it stands for the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. That's what DIBELS stands for. And basically, excuse me, it assesses literacy skills for our younger age students. We have set an aggressive goal, and it's an intentional goal, and it's a necessary goal, that by 2025, we want all of our third graders reading on grade level. That's taking it to the next level. It's aggressive. You know, I'm very optimistic because I believe in our children with no excuses. I believe in our teachers, and I believe that we have the right staff to get it done. And I know that our parents want this for their children regardless of their income levels, zip codes, race, language, all of that. They all want their children in a better place. And so they trust their children to us to help them get there. So you're going to hear today about DIBELS and where we are. I thought about it, and this year's first graders in 2025 will be our third graders. And so we, you know, we're watching, we're watching all of our data, but we're specifically honed in on that group. And you're going to hear about the beginning of your data and where we were. We just finished progress monitoring in middle of the year. You know, some is good, but again, we confront. That's the only way we interrupt and give shots of support wherever we need to get them to where they need to be. So I think we have Anne Botticelli that is on, and I will turn things over to her.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Excellent. Okay, so I am here today to talk a little bit about our mid-year DIBELS scores. So again, that's the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. It's a series of short, efficient tests that our students take. They're administered directly by teachers to the students. And the composite score is what we're going to look at tonight. So we administer DIBELS grades K through 4. So at the beginning, the middle, and the end of the year, we call those the benchmark periods. We assess our students. We look to see if they're hearing the sounds of the language, the phonemes, so the speech sounds. We look to see if they are able to match those sounds to print. So do they recognize that the "ch" sound in "chat" is spelled with a CH? So we ask to see if they can decode, basically. Can they read the words? And then we're going to assess them in oral fluency. So can they read accurately, quickly, and with prosody? So prosody means the correct intonation. Are they putting the right emphasis on particular words in a sentence? So can you tell that they comprehend the text when they read? Do they have that prosody? Are they automatic in their decoding? Are they quick and correct? Do they have prosody when they read? And then as they go up through the grade levels, we add a comprehension measure called MACE. So when taking all of those tests together at a particular grade level, we come up with a composite score. So M-class is the vendor that we use to compile our DIBELS data, so electronically. And we're going to look at some of the results today. Admire, if you could please go to the next slide? So I just want to give you a little context to understand where we are in terms of our data. So if you look at this chart, and it's probably a little hard to read because it's small print, but you can see where the current students are in terms of the pandemic. So for example, our current fourth graders were in first grade in 2019-20. So they were in first grade when we went out in March, which means they had a full year of kindergarten and a partial year of first grade. Their teacher may or may not have gotten to some of those prerequisite skills in first grade when we went out in March. So it's possible that they had just started learning the silent "e" rule. So some fundamental foundational skills would have been impacted during that time period. Our current third graders were in kindergarten when we went out in 2019-20. So they had about a half a year of kindergarten. So they had a true interruption of their formal foundational skills education during kindergarten. Our current second graders would have been in pre-K. Our current first graders, actually not until 2021 would they have been in pre-K. And our current kindergarteners did not start school, they didn't start pre-K until last year. So just the trajectory of where everyone currently is and where they came from, I think gives us relevant context when we look at their grade level skills. So please bear in mind, fourth graders had that interruption when they were in the middle of first grade, and third graders had that interruption in the middle of kindergarten. So you'll see that bearing out in some of their scores, but there's good news too. So I'm going to move on. And just so you know, national DIBELS data has come out, and they have found that our current third graders have shown no growth since last year. So they have improved, excuse me, they've improved a little bit since... So they have improved, excuse me, they've improved a little bit since last year, but in general, they are not showing the growth and they're not matching the scores from pre-COVID times. So third grade has been dramatically impacted, especially relevant to other grade levels. So just, we just try to bear that in mind and that is our, right now, our focused grade level because we know they'll be taking a state assessments this year and we know that we need to solidify some of those foundational skills for those students. Admire, next slide, please. So here is our kindergarten composite scores from the mid, beginning of the year and middle of the year. And in, just as a reference point, I included last year's scores as well. So when you look across the top, you'll see 2021, 22, beginning of year scores, followed by the middle of year scores from last year, just as a comparison point to where we are this year. So the third bar shows you this year's beginning of year scores and then the last bar shows you this year's middle of year scores. So if you look at beginning and middle of this year, you can see there was growth in kindergarten. So the students, and when I say growth, I look at it two ways. So there's growth in the number of students or the percent of students that are benchmark or above. And there's sort of reverse growth in the sense that the number of students who were at the intensive level, those red bars, has decreased. So those are the two variables that I think are really important to note. We have an increase in the middle of year in the number of students who are benchmark or above, and we have a decrease in the number of students who are considered well below grade level. So both of those benchmarks are really important to think about because some of the work we're doing is trying to target the students who are at the well below or intensive level. We're making sure we're solidifying their skills and moving them out of that red that you see, right? So when you see a reduction in the amount of red on that bar, you see the percent going down, that is a plus for us. You can also see it relative to last year's middle of year scores, so slightly better than last year. So a slight variance in the number of students who were considered well below. So last year at this time, we were at 53%, this year we're at 49%. Neither of which is acceptable, however, we bear in mind where the students started and the work that we're doing so that we will continue to see the gains. So right now, the kindergarten composite looks at various tests like letter naming fluency. We assess the students to see if they can recognize or decode, right? So can they, first PSF, we'll see if they know the sounds of words and then NWF will take a look at whether they can match those sounds to print. So those are some of the variables that are considered part of that composite score. And the furthest numbers on the right show you the number of students that were tested during each benchmarking period. Okay. Admire, if you can go to the next slide. So this is our grade one composite scores and these are the particular students Dr. Williams was referencing when she said they'll be in third grade in a couple of years, right? So we're, we're paying particular attention to the grade one cohort because we know they want, we want them to be on grade level by third, end of third. So again, you can look at, for reference, where we were last year compared to where we are this year. And you'll see that there is a decrease in the number of students that are considered well below. So that red bar has gone down from the beginning of year at 58% to 49% at the middle of the year. And that's actually lower than it was last year's middle of year. So last year at the middle of the year, we were at 53%. This year we're at 49%. So we're doing better in terms of that decrease from beginning of this year to middle of this year and in comparison to last year's middle of year scores. Our, with a slight increase in the number of students that are considered benchmark or above. So you see the green and the blue increasing from the beginning of year to the middle of year and relative to last year's middle of year as well. The variable is always going to be that the number of students tested changes year to year. So when you're looking at this year's 2022, 23 first graders, excuse me, first graders, um, and I was just looking at the wrong slide. So in kindergarten, we've actually made, excuse me, first grade, we've made more dramatic gains than I said. Last year we were at 65% middle of year and this year we're at 51% for the number of students that are intensive. So that's actually a bigger, a bigger improvement. But you'll see that the number of students varies from year to year and this year's current first graders would have been last year's kindergartners. So if you want to look cohort to cohort, you can trace this year compared to the grade before last year. So you can always track a group of students from grade to grade as you go. So you can see that our first graders are doing better from the beginning to the middle of the year and in comparison to last year. Admire, if you can go to the next slide, please. Grade two, slight variability, but not as big an increase as we want to see. So this is another one of our target grade levels. So we've been working with principals to do some deep dives into the data. We want to see improvement in the grade two scores and we want to make sure that we're targeting the students that appear in that red bar. Those are the students who are considered well below grade level. Admire, next slide, please. Now, grade three is the particular grade level I said nationally had not made an improvement. So we're relatively consistent with the rest of the nation. So if you look at this year's middle of year scores compared to these kids when they were in kindergarten, they're relatively similar scores. So what we want to see is that red decreasing. Right now it's at 56%. We want to see that dip dramatically. Admire, next slide, please. And here are our fourth graders. So these were the students that went out in the middle of first grade. So you can see they have a slight improvement in the number of students who are at benchmark or above. Pretty consistent right now, the number of students that are considered intensive, well below grade level in our region. We want to see that red decreasing, we want to see the green and blue continuing to increase. So what are we doing about the data? Admire, if you can go to the next slide, please. So we are focusing on progress monitoring to drive instruction. So I just showed you our benchmark scores, our beginning and middle of year scores, but in between those periods, we progress monitor as well. So the students who are considered well below or below, those students that appeared in the red and the yellow bars, we progress monitor those students bi-weekly. And then students who are benchmarked, progress monitored approximately once a month. We want to keep tabs on how those students are performing, even if they are benchmarked. We want to make sure that there's no regression. So we consistently take their pulse, so to speak. So we use the same types of tests that we use at the benchmark periods consistently throughout the course of the year, just to make sure that the growth maintains or improves. So we've been working with schools to really hone in on that progress monitoring data to make sure that the kids are making the appropriate amount of growth. And I'm going to show you a couple of examples in a minute. But so we can go deeper when we go student by student to see if they are making significant gains, even if they haven't left their initial level. So even if they still remain below or well below, have they made gains that are sufficient enough to move them soon enough by the end of the year into the next level? So that is one of the things we look at when we progress monitor. So again, teachers take time bi-weekly or once a month for the benchmark students to just check in with the students, administer the brief assessments and make sure that they are on track. We're also working with schools to use more targeted interventions at the tier two level. So those students that appeared in the yellow bar, we've been reframing the way we want to approach intervention with those students. So we're using specific lessons that have been recommended by their, their data system. So when they take DIBELS, they receive a recommendation for teacher-led instruction. So for each student, there are specific lessons that are suggested. So teachers are now in tier two and so, and also in differentiated time, pulling those students and teaching the recommended direct instruction lessons as opposed to other practices that might have happened in the past. So we're being very targeted about exactly what is happening during the tier two intervention periods every day. So teachers can use lessons from I-Ready, from DIBELS or from Lexia, and those are based on student data. So they're geared specifically to meet the needs of those students. So we're trying to be as targeted as we can during tier two intervention. Teachers can also use those lessons at other points in the day, but specifically we're honing in during RTI. There has been a curriculum change in grade six, so I just wanted to update you. We've gone to full module implementation in grade six. So it exposes students to a lot of deep, deep higher order thinking based on the text that they are reading and the writing they're going to do. So we've created higher order thinking questions to accompany the modules. So we've added dragon wings, flush and hidden figure, figures to our sixth grade curriculum. So now students spend the entire year immersed in the modules for ELA. Pretty much every day, the ASLs and TAI are visiting schools to view instruction and conduct deep data dives. So I will frequently partner with an ASL and go to a particular building and will really spend quality time going into the school's data with the administrative team and the coaching team. So we go in, we dive into DIBELS, we analyze it by student, by homeroom, by intervention group. We take a look at what's working and what's not working and help them address any gaps that they're seeing. So we look at different platforms, we look at core instruction platforms, intervention platforms, just to make sure that everyone is on the same page with what needs to happen at the school level. So we've really had an intense focus on data as we work with the schools this year. Today, we actually shared curriculum audits with all the schools. So the high schools got theirs yesterday for the regents exams and we provided them for the elementary today, the principal meeting. So the principals brought their coaches to the session today and we took a, a look at DIBELS again, we looked at some other data points and we really spent time looking at the curriculum audits. So a curriculum audit looks at every standard that's assessed on the state assessment and/or regents exam. We outline exactly where it's taught in our own curriculum. We look at how many times that particular standard has been assessed over the past five or six years by the state. We give you the, the number of times and then the type of item, whether it's a constructive response item or a multiple choice item. We then look at how the district did on those particular items in 2022. Next, we compare ourselves to the region to see how our students fared compared to their counterparts in the area. And then we do a really deep analysis into the types of questions that were asked. So were the students struggling with a particular item because of the way the question was worded? Because of when the information was taught during the sequence of the year? Because it wasn't taught sufficiently? So we try to do a really deep analysis of where we performed on a particular item, how frequently that particular item has been assessed over time to predict what it will look like in the future? And then what we need to do instructionally to make sure we address that standard for the students. So for example, if a, a particular skill was taught during first and second quarter, but not during third quarter, and yet it continues to be assessed on the assessment, the state assessment, we take a look at what we can do instructionally to make sure we refresh students' understanding of that skill right before the state assessment. So schools then take that information and can make plans back at the building level. So we have those available for three to eight tests in English and math, for the geometry, algebra and algebra II regions and for the English regions. So that's what we call a curriculum audit. And then we continue to provide targeted, inclusive, innovative, enriching literacy center programming with an SEL focus. So we were able to do that last year, we're going to do it again this year. We know how important it is to keep our kids on track, to have them practicing with pertinent skills, to have them with teachers in the classroom during summertime. So again, we will continue to provide that level of intervention to the students we need. So at the elementary level and then obviously at the secondary level. So these are just some of the things we're working on, but I want to talk a little bit about one of our key interventions. So if you can go to the next slide, please, Admire. You've probably heard me talk a number of times about our Orton-Gillingham program. So we began rolling that out last year. We are still in the middle of training. So we have teachers in the cohorts right now. So we have cohorts running all spring. It's a five-day training. Some teachers are going through embedded training during the day, other teachers are going on Saturdays. And then we're going to be offering additional training opportunities in the summer. But our goal is to start next year with the largest bulk of our teachers trained and ready to go with Orton-Gillingham as an intervention. So we did add kindergarten and E&amp;L this year, which obviously bumped up the numbers of teachers that we need to, to work with, but we think it's important to have kindergarten as a baseline. So we initially, we're looking at this strictly as an intervention, but we recognize if we have that solid foundation in kindergarten, we'll actually be able to decrease the amount of intervention we need to provide as students move up through the grade levels. So we'll be offering Orton-Gillingham across kindergarten. Every student will have the opportunity to get that foundational framework through the program. We're not sure yet if it will end up being the core or the, the basic RTI, but every kindergarten will have the opportunity to participate in Orton-Gillingham. So again, it's going to take time for us to see true systemic growth, but we do have some students that have evidence growth in a really relatively short timeframe. So I just wanted to, to do a couple of quick shout-outs. So many of our teachers really just began implementing the program because they finished training recently. Some were able to start it earlier in the year because they attended the previous school year. So I just, I have a group of students on the next slide, Admire, please. Oh, excuse me, one particular student on the next slide, just to show you a snapshot. Okay. So this particular student started out the year in the well below category, so in the red. And during the middle of year, they improved to below. And currently, based on their progress monitoring, if you can see the 31 and the nine, they have actually met and in this case of the decoding WRC, they've exceeded their targets for the end of the year at this point. So this is a kindergartner who's been part of the Orton-Gillingham program since October. So I just wanted you to see what can happen when students are receiving that structured literacy intervention. So I think it's really important, again, this is one student sample, but this is what can happen for our kids. So this can unlock the key to literacy for many students who without really explicit systematic sequential decoding practice would not move to proficiency. So again, this student started the year in kindergarten in the red, that well below category. By the middle of year had moved to the below category, which is roughly one year below grade level. And then at this point in time, with just a little bit of progress monitoring, has, at the 31, has met the end of year and the nine has exceeded. So for those two NWF tests, which we consider to be the most relevant for a student who's learning to decode, the student has already met their end of year goals. And so again, the student has been in the class since, they've been receiving the intervention since about October. Admire, if you can go to the next slide. Here are some other kindergarten students also in the program since October. So you can see the first student started out in the below category and is now benchmark. If you see those words to the right, it says above average, that's the composite growth. We spend time looking at individual students to see what their composite growth looks like. So you can have average growth, above average growth or well above average growth. And that's what we are hoping to see with all of our students. We know if they start the year below grade level, average growth probably won't be sufficient to move them to grade level. So what we're aiming for is students to hit above average growth or well above average growth. The converse is also possible. They could show that they did not meet average growth. So they could have well below average growth also. But with our Orton-Gillingham students, we're really hoping to see that they continue to hit above average and well above average so that they move from below grade level to on or above grade level. So the second student had a similar trajectory. This student, the 89 points seems lower than the 100, but they started at a different point. So from 301 to 390, that 89 points was considered well above average growth for that typical student. So that is really phenomenal. That is exactly what we want to see. And we're, hopefully they will maintain this growth throughout the year. You can see the next student started well below and has moved into the next category of below because they gained 107 points. That's above average growth. To the right, the student, both of those students started well below. One has actually moved into benchmark from the well below, so they, they skipped right over below and went right to benchmark. They had well above average growth at 119. And then the other student went from well below to below, again, well above average growth, but started, the initial score was lower than the previous student. So these are actually kindergartners from the same class. I thought it was pertinent to, to show you a cluster of kids who've been receiving the intervention for a few months and they'll continue to receive it for the rest of the year. and they'll continue to receive it for the rest of the year. And I think that they are emblematic of many of our other students. So we won't always see quick gains, it's going to take time. And some students who might be a little bit older and are struggling with decoding will take longer to see the gains, but we are pretty confident that it's going to work and that we're going to see our students become proficient decoders. Now remember, decoding is not the only thing, that's not the only ingredient, right, to being a successful reader. The recipe entails more than just decoding, but that's the foundation. Without decoding, you will never be a proficient reader. There's other skills that we add as we go. So once they achieve the baseline of being able to read, to decode proficiently, we add in language comprehension, vocabulary building skills, so a number of other facets of the language that kids need. But that base for us is always going to be whether they can read the word on the page. We want them to read automatically, correctly, and efficiently, right, so quickly. And then when they become fluent readers, they'll have that prosody on top of it. They'll read with the correct intonation, they'll recognize that at a question, you raise your voice at the end, right? So they'll know what it's like to be a prosodic reader. But here is where we start. And I don't actually have a slide for the next one, but I did want to let you know that when a student finishes Orton Gillingham, right, theoretically, they have learned how to read, and then they move to the next phase, which is reading to learn, right? So now I can read, so now the more I read, the more I learn, right? So at first, I'm learning how to read. And once I become a proficient decoder, I then take that knowledge of how to read, and I learn, I gain a lot of information because I can read now, so I'm going to access text, right? So they refer to it as learning to read and reading to learn. So when kids are ready to read to learn, we have another program that we can use with them called morphology. Morphology, we're training all the third through sixth grade teachers and the E N L teachers as well. We're training them how to give skills, the, give students the skills to attack vocabulary words, right? So when they see a word, do they recognize there's a prefix? Do they recognize there's a suffix? Do they recognize there's a base? So we teach them prefixes and suffixes and roots in Greek and Latin, right? So we know most of our common academic words come from Latin. And then many of our domain-specific words come from Greek. So for example, geography or a mathematical term, they're off, words in specific subject areas often come from Greek. So we want the kids to learn the base of Latin and then attack the Greek words. So that's part of the morphology program that our students will experience. We have teachers in training right now, I've watched a couple of teachers influence it, and it's phenomenal, the kids are engaged. And there's, it's a very similar routine to what they do in Orton Gillingham. So a student who starts in Orton Gillingham can actually move through the program and up through morphology. But other students can start right into morphology to increase that vocabulary, that fluency and comprehension. We know that it's about fifty to sixty percent of the text, that your comprehension is affected by your vocabulary knowledge. So if you can't, if you can't read the words on the page, you're not going to comprehend. But even when you can read them, if you don't know what they mean, right, it affects your comprehension. So fifty to sixty percent of the time, when a student is struggling with comprehension, it's probably a vocabulary skill. So it's really important to us that we not only focus on the decoding with the students who are struggling there, but once they know how to decode, we want to start tackling vocabulary and comprehension. Okay, I promised I would be brief, so if anyone has any questions, I'm ready to answer.
Thank you, Chief Botticelli, I think you made it very clear that developing reading skills is very complex, there's so much to it. I just have a simple question before I go to my colleagues in alphabetical order. So this is DIBELS testing, are we also doing I Ready testing?
We did, yes, we do I Ready for Literacy in grades three to eight. We do DIBELS in grades K to four.
Okay, so as a parent. So as a parent, and maybe you can't answer this question, but as a parent, when I go in for parent conferences or open house and I'm getting reading scores, updated progress on reading scores, what, do you know what I'm hearing? Am I hearing DIBELS scores or am I hearing I Ready scores or both?
It depends on the grade level of the student, I think your student's in fifth grade, sixth grade?
My youngest is fourth.
So fourth, you're probably hearing both, there's DIBELS and I Ready available for a fourth grader. DIBELS, we stopped using DIBELS after the R T I regulation, so we don't use it in fifth and sixth.
Okay.
So K, if a fourth grader, you could potentially be asked, you can ask about DIBELS as well as I Ready.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for the great presentation. President Belton Cotman, any questions?
I really don't, I, again, I just want to say the same thing, I'd like to see the data drilled down. I'd like to know who those students are, okay? It's important to know, when we start looking at data, we want to look at the marginal, the children who are, I call them the least of these, as the Bible would refer, but the ones who are marginalized, I want to see if they're moving, that group, that segment of students, if they're moving. So just for me, when we start doing data, I really want to see the data drilled down so that I can get a picture of what we're doing district-wide, that's all, thank you, I appreciate it. It's a very good, good presentation, and I'm sure we're going to get some great results, and we're going to be on target in twenty twenty-five, I already believe that. One question I can ask, though, what are we doing to improve or to get children to read at home? I know we have different programs, but are we setting any incentives? And are children maybe getting a pizza party or cookies or something if they read at home? What are we doing to get the children to read at home?
So it would probably vary by school, I can tell you that many of them did things like Lexia competitions over break. We sent home practice packets for the state assessment the past couple of breaks. We also have raising a reader in pre-K and K. So those students take home a sort of a bookbag of books every month, and they read them with their parents. In pre-K, they have trained the parents, what particular skills to emphasize with the kids, what kinds of questions to ask. And we're going to be offering that training at our community schools for kindergarten parents as well. So kindergarten parents are all invited to come on different Saturdays and learn some strategies to use with their students at home when they read together. So that's raising a reader in pre-K and K. And then it would probably vary by school for the other grade levels.
And I want to say that we also partner with the mayor. And so during the summer, because what we don't want to do is see a loss and the gains that we see at the end of the year because there's that gap during the summer. And so we partner with the mayor for the reading rules. And I wasn't really, you know, sold on it, but I went to the event that they had in October, and the convention center was full of parents, but they were giving away bikes and, you know, lots of incentives for children who had read and had solidified that they read the books, and there's, I think, a little test, or they write a little bit about the books. So, you know, we're going to amp that up because it really works, the parents were so excited, the children were so excited. And so, you know, this summer, we got a lot of work to do, we just don't want to lose what it is we gained by the end of the year, because I think we will continue to see gains at summertime. So we're going to be doing a lot of work reaching out to our parents. We can't make it mandatory, but it's going to be strongly recommended that to keep their children on target, that their children participate in reading this summer and participate in some of our summer programs.
Okay, thank you.
I know I'm a little off topic, I also wanted to point out First in Math, I don't know if you've heard about it, but we're doing, we have a program called First in Math that helps kids practice fluency. And we are ranked in the state, many of our schools. So a lot of the schools are encouraging kids to practice, there's going to be a state level competition in the spring. And I know we've already had schools asking about how they can engage. So if you hear anything about First in Math, it's something similar, so it's an opportunity for kids to practice from home as well as school.
Okay, so the only other thing that comes to mind here is that we have unfortunately a lot of parents who cannot read. And I'm wondering if a possible initiative would be that we can have children read the books and video them, or do something creative to help people who cannot read. I mean, I'd like to see an initiative put in place where, you know, a child is holding a book up and they're showing the pictures and they're reading it so that someone else who does not know the language or who's struggling with the language can help. I think that would be a great project to do to highlight our young people. Thank you so much for all you're doing, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, before we go to our next board member, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, I just want to share that as a parent, most of what Chief Botticelli shared that about getting us as parents to help with reading at home, I've experienced that, especially from kindergarten to third grade. And the First in Math, that is wonderful, my youngest son, after I let him know that people are paying attention to this throughout the district and statewide, he is so motivated by it and will give me updates as to where he stands in the class. So yeah, I think that's definitely catching students' attention and maybe just getting, we need to get the word out to parents that this is something that's being done and encourage their children to do it. All right, Dr. Evans-Brown.
Thank you, Ann, for another great presentation. I'm glad that we're using the Orton Gillingham intervention because it certainly seems like it is working, you cited some examples where it is working. I was going to hit home too, because a lot of times, many of our children are work, living in alternative living situations with kinship relatives, for example. And so they don't get the opportunities of, you know, biological parents reading to them or vice versa. And so I remember being a substitute teacher ten years ago, and I don't know if the principal put this in place, but a lot of the initiatives where every day from one time to another, whether it was fifteen or twenty minutes, every student in that building read. So I don't know if we can mandate that, Dr. Williams, or not, but it was really cool, and it seemed like the kids flourished, you know, with those, with that opportunity to read. So nevertheless, I think that we're on our way, and it certainly sounds like this is a good initiative that we're implementing. And one other thing, when things work, why don't we keep them? Because a lot of times, you know, we have initiatives that work and all of a sudden it goes away. Let's stick with this and continue to provide the P V for teachers because that's one of the things that I heard teachers, when Paulette and I went to this reading with Kareem Weaver, most of those teachers from different districts were saying, you know, they leave us out of the equation when these things, you know, these kinds of things are implemented. And so that was one of the negative things that teachers talked about. So let's keep it and be consistent and involve the teachers in this.
I have actually heard that over time, they always say, you know, a new initiative every year kind of thing. So we intend to keep Orton Gillingham for quite a while.
I fully agree with what you said, Dr. Evans-Brown. Orton Gillingham has been around for a while, and we've used it in pieces in districts. And it's great that we're fully investing in it, and we need to stick to it and not give up on it. Next, Board Member Hurd.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. My first question, I just had some thoughts, as I looked at the chart here, I see a large percentage of our kids that's in the red. And in the reading program, we go back several years, it doesn't seem to be much of a drastic change, you know, working with the programs. I know you're talking about the success of the programs that we have now and some success stories. But what about those that's not happening as a success story? I know you said you implement more programming for them, but if these children are struggling that much and they're, and of course, we use the whole home concept to where we try to incorporate the parents in reading. Sharon made an illustration of that a little earlier. But identifying these homes and identifying these families and seeing the critical needs of these families and trying to get them to understand the importance of being able to read in their future. What would you think different we can do, or what do you think that we can try to have a potential to reach out to them and grasp them?
Well, I would say instructionally, the Orton Gillingham is brand new, so most students have not yet been part of that program. So you're not really seeing a huge impact yet in our DIBELS scores because a lot of classrooms are beginning.
Beginning, yes.
Yeah. Supporting our families is always important, so the more we can connect with them at home and show them strategies that they can use. See, like when you're reading with your younger student, you don't have to be especially proficient because the books are at an easier level and the kids are reading to you. So there's strategies we can give parents, even if they're not comfortable necessarily at a more advanced level for reading. So those are things we want to work on, especially with our younger parents, because we want to instill that love of reading with the kids when they're little. Some of our parents are English language learners themselves, so there's different things that we have to do to work with organizations to help translate in the conversation and make sure that they have the same information that some of our other families have.
Yes.
And we should probably be encouraging as many families as possible to participate in English as a Second Language types of programs. So Adult Ed does offer some opportunities and a lot of the agencies around here as well. So there's probably other outreach opportunities we can provide. And I know the multilingual department has been hosting sort of little forums for different language groups, trying to bring the parents in and teach them a little bit about our school system and how they can support their students at home. So they got, they actually wrote and won a grant to do that work with a number of the language communities.
I know David Rose came and presented, his associate came and presented it last month, a little bit about DIBELS and some stuff that they had with the kid during the summer program. So just a little bit about the summer program or after-school program and our ability to reach out to these families, to try to get those individuals in. If we can talk to them later, in later times, see if we can discuss some of that. Also, also, you said, you mentioned that our teachers are being trained, what about our teacher's assistants? Do they be trained in DIBELS also so they work directly with our students?
Probably not in Orton Gillingham itself, but what we can do is provide certain elements of the program, like strategy-wise, that they can use to support students.
Is there a reason why we can't have teacher assistants trained in this program or?
In terms of, in terms of making sure there's enough slots for teachers to be able to attend, that is our top priority. And so we still have a few hundred teachers that we need to get through training. But once we are, we have covered the bulk of the teaching staff that needs to get trained, then we can move to other groups. And I know there's been requests from many schools that we also start training our first grade teachers. So there's still a large number of people in the demographic pool that we need to address first. And the vendor that we're working with prioritizes the number of trainers and the number of slots they have available.
Keep students posted and see, you know, the measures we can take, you know, any more help that we can give in the classroom with this, I know it'll be.
Absolutely.
It's our children that we care about. And lastly, I just want to say that, that another thing that we do is, I would like the district to take a look and to partner with also French for Better Buffalo, General Motors, and also the Boys and Girls Club. Every year, we partner with Andre Reed on his Reed to Reed program that he brings to the city of Buffalo and all across the United States. So let's see if we can try to partner with them because it's very interesting, he brings a slew of knowledge. He's a Hall of Famer here, one of my old partners, and his goal now is literacy and helping families. So be coming every year and let's see if that's something that we can attach to also. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Hurd, Board Member McEcken. Or did we lose Board Member McEcken?
No, she's listening, she is, she called and said she's in and out, but she'll be back in shortly.
Okay, we'll go to, I don't think Mrs. McCosy's here, Dr. Rivera.
Mrs. McCosy is under the weather, Mr. Scott.
Okay.
I'm sorry to hear that. I have just two questions. The first one is, forgive me if I missed it, but when we're using Orton Gillingham, are we identifying specific populations of students to receive that training? Or are we doing a whole, whole approach with the younger grades?
So in kindergarten, it's all students? Well, I should say it will be because we're still training kindergarten teachers.
Of course, I understand.
We're training all of our special education teachers, so grades K through eight, so they'll be able to work with their student populations. But we're using it as an R T I intervention, so really, it's any student that is struggling to decode.
Great, I'm really happy to hear that. Orton Gillingham, like Mr. Scott said, has a long track record, and it will catch students who may not be identified as a student with a disability but may have some aspects or some pieces of dyslexia that aren't quite enough for referrals. So I'm really glad to hear that you're using that for R T I. The other piece is to. other piece is to build on what Mr. Hurd was talking about and what President Cotton was talking about, about outreach to families and incentives for families. My question is about access. So I heard a really good example of the work you're doing to reach out to families. What I'm curious about though is when we're working with working families, when parents have multiple obligations, even though this is something that they may want to take advantage of, they may have trouble accessing it, they may have barriers to transportation, barriers to childcare, and other pieces of it that we've looked at and talked about already when we talk about student support and family engagement. When we do outreach, for example, the grant you mentioned, are there conversations having to do with access and increasing access to these programs for families to go together, maybe incentives that we can put in there for families, like what Dr. Williams was talking about with the mayor's incentive? Or is that a next step?
I think that would probably, I don't think that the RISWIT grant would include incentives at this point. They do provide refreshments at the venue and they bring in translators and things like that, but they don't really have incentives built in. So that is definitely something that we can look at. I heard it from three different board members to engage families more. So I had that one on clear. So we're gonna find ways that we can bring this to the parental level, possibly just communicating better about what the approach is, what it means, why your student's receiving it, and then ways that we can support them at home.
If I could just add one thing is to think about that access piece with transportation, maybe aligning with other centers that we're providing services to, Saturday Academies. We have a bunch of different things out there and it would be nice to see that integrated. I think that would be an easier lift too, both for the parents and for the district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Board Member Shuda.
First of all, Ann, I want to thank you and your team. And the overwhelming task of coordinating this for every building, I know as a building principal, to coordinate the pieces was very cumbersome but very effective when we used the data and showing growth for our kids. The only, I just have one question. Have we been affected or is there a plan in place for classrooms that may not have a permanent teacher? Is there someone in the building who's been designated to make sure instruction continues?
You mean as in a substitute or another teacher to?
Right.
That is probably unique to every building. I know they have building-based subs that are available and then we appoint temporary teachers whenever, obviously, we can find one.
Right.
The goal in training so many different people in Orton is that they can maximize staffing. So we work with schools at the elementary to make sure that they, well, you know this, but that they schedule their RTI periods simultaneously at a grade level so that students can walk to the appropriate level of intervention. So we're trying to train as many teachers as we can in Orton-Gillingham so that there will be somebody at every grade level to support that work. So schools have a reading teacher, some have more than one reading teacher, the special ed teacher during RTI can support students, the literacy coach is trained, there's any number of individuals that we're trying to reach. And then kindergarten across the board, we want all those teachers trained.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Board Member Shuda. And last but not least, Board Member Woods.
Ann, I want to commend you on a great presentation. Kathy, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown and I did go to, I went to two presentations by Dr. Kareem Weaver on the science of reading and the importance of reading. If a child can't read, they can't succeed in anything. They can't do the math, they can't understand, they can't communicate. So Madam Superintendent Jer pushed to make sure every child can read at grade level by grade three. That is as important as it gets. The suburban schools that were represented, and I think Kathy and I were the only two from Buffalo, I believe, but they highly recommended this Orton-Gillingham model. They said it is effective and it makes a difference. But Dr. Kareem Weaver also had some other science of reading techniques that have been proven effective that I would hope we would look into because this is something we can't put enough emphasis on. Nothing succeeds without reading. So I thank you for your presentation and I hope that we can get this at each, in all the schools so that our children can move ahead. And you're showing some progress, but as I guess our superintendent would say, we have a lot more to do.
Me too. Thank you. Yes, every school will have teachers trained in the program to provide the intervention, every elementary.
Thank you, Board Member Woods. President Bellin-Cotman, you have one more question?
Well, in fact, I sent it to you, but I was wondering, is the trainings for Orton-Gillingham, is it recorded?
I don't believe it's, there are some recordings. Not that, the main training is five days. Currently, we do it virtually, so teachers log in typically on a Saturday, but some people are doing it during the school day. So it's five consecutive days of the full-time training. And then there's videos that they have to support, like a refresher, specific elements of the program if you wanted to dive a little deeper into it. So the teachers actually get access to a whole platform full of videos and materials and things.
Okay, so it is something to help refresh their memories and things like that.
And our supervisor of reading, Barb Fassel, has been going out school by school and providing in-person refreshers for a lot of staff. So they found that to be very effective too, as they begin the implementation.
Okay, one other question. Are you using the data to drive the instruction? So are the schools with the lowest literacy rates being brought in first?
We opened up, well, we do three structured literacy training. So first is letters. So Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, it kind of lays out why we do what we do. And then the Orton and the morphology are kind of the how. So we opened up letters to all K-4 teachers, our E&amp;L staff, special education staff, et cetera. So that's sort of the baseline. And then Orton-Gillingham, we again opened up to everyone in the demographic that qualifies. So we did not distinguish between particular schools. We wanted, because we know that there's students in every school who struggle with decoding or who might have dyslexia. So we've actually opened it up across the board at the elementary level.
I understand that, but if we're gonna be a data-driven environment or if we're gonna use data to drive us to the next level, it should, in my opinion, have, it should be taken into consideration when you start training, if you're trying to pull up certain numbers, that the children with the greatest needs would be identified and those teachers would be really impressed upon to come to these classes and get it as quickly as possible. It does not make sense if you have children struggling that the resources and the data is not being used to drive it. And that's just my two bits, and I'm gonna continue to say that because if you don't go after the, again, least of these, the children that need it the most, and in some sort of a concerted effort, you're not going to get, you're not gonna get the elevation that you need to show that these children are moving to the next level. So I just feel, Madam Superintendent, if we have data and we show that these pockets exist, that we ought to make sure that we're intentionally hitting those areas. Thank you.
So anyone who's, yeah, I was just gonna say, anybody who sort of knows.
If I can just share, one of the things, as I looked at the charts tonight, you know, we've got the district-wide data. So we can say for third graders that we know that this percentage of students, you know, is reading on grade level. Now it's time for us to look at where we see lots of red, where are those schools, where are the classrooms? And, you know, Ann's got a really smart team of folks that, you know, wanna go out and support. And so I know she and Darlene have already kind of been going out and working with principals on peeling data and including Sharon in that too, because again, you know, you can't learn to read if you're not in school and if you're, you know, having some social-emotional issues. So the Dream Team, they've been going out, but we do have to start now. Now that we've got the district composite, we've got to start drilling down and looking at which schools, and it's not an I gotcha, it's not a punitive feeling, I hope, that our schools are feeling, but they're feeling that they're coming in to really support. That's the only way we get better, is to look at where we have the most need and the team is going out. And so that's what my next question will be. So where are the schools where we're really seeing some deficits? And those are the things that we would like to see as a board, that progress, you know, that's how we're gonna drive the data. I think, Ann, I saw you shake your head, I think we're at the point where we need to know where those pockets are and how we move them to the next level. Because that, and personally, as a board member, and I'm sure most board members feel this way, if there's anything that we can do to help, you know, if it's an issue of, you know, trying to get involved or whatever with our constituents, all of us would be happy to do that because reading is paramount. And I just want to share with this group, I was invited to a Equity Coalition, and one of the things that the Equity Coalition was talking about was looking at how schools are selected. And later, one of the participants said, but I really think we need to look at literacy. And my response to them was, why aren't you looking at literacy? If a child can't read, they can't succeed. So, you know, you have people in our community that wants, wanna take on different projects, but I really don't think they want to get their hands dirty. I think they want to take, you know, just go in and fluff up the stuff instead of making sure that we make a difference in the lives of children. So I just want to thank you guys for noting that and working on that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I want you to know, you know, we've talked about the year of instruction in the past. This has really been kind of the year of data. I mean, all we've been doing at the principals at every session is diving into their data, showing them how to disaggregate it, how do you filter and look at your subgroups, what are you doing in those classrooms? Our priority was training the reading teachers in Orton-Gillingham. So almost, there might be one or two new hires that happen, but the majority have all gone through that training because we know they target the students most in need of intervention at the school level. So we made sure that they were a priority to get trained. And special education as well for that purpose.
Can we have a discussion with the colleges and make sure they start incorporating it in? I mean, I think we're at a point now where we should go to the next level with this. Okay, why would we, and if a teacher comes in, already taught this as part of their curriculum, then certainly we can get to the next level quicker. And there's no need of hiring people that we have to continue to train. So I really think it's time to have a conversation with our educational partners who are teaching teachers to be teachers. I really do. Because it's not, let's do that. Thanks.
I agree with that, President Bellin-Cotman. All right, Chief Botticelli, thank you so much to you and to your team for the presentation and all that you're doing. Dr. Williams, any last thoughts before we transition to finance and ops? And Chairwoman Woods?
No, I think everything's been said. I think we're on the right track. We've gotta go deeper in looking at the data and providing supports. But thank you so much, Chief Botticelli. She does a great job.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good morning. All right, Chairwoman Woods, it's all yours.
Welcome to the Finance and Operations Work Session. Outside of selecting a superintendent, which the board did a very good job on, passing our budget to fund a spending plan to fund our educational endeavors is the board's next biggest responsibility. We have three key reports tonight. A budget preparation update, an ARP-ESR report update from our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Jim Barnes. And then we also have a very important capital budget planning update. So that we'll have buildings to house our students in our operations, which will be given by our Chief Operating Officer, David Hill. So with that, I turn it over to our superintendent to do staff and say whatever she'd like.
It's gonna be more data. This is data also. And, you know, I just want to say that, you know, we engage in monthly check, connects, and updates on our budget. It's important that we keep our finger to the pulse on the budget. I keep saying, where you spend your money shows where you prioritize. And, you know, again, we don't want any I gotchas, we don't want any I thought I could, I didn't know I could. We know that there are districts that have gotten into trouble doing that. And I'm just proud of the work that under Chief Barnes, you know, he's been able to do. All of our reports have been filed on time and expertly, and he's just doing a great job. He adheres to the regulations. You know, he's just doing a really great job. And as far as our capital projects go, it's a lot that's happening at the same time. We've had some longstanding capital project issues. That's no secret. You know, it didn't just happen two months ago. It's been years that some of these things haven't been addressed, but I'm proud to say that under Chief Hills, in one year, we've been able to relocate Research Lab, we've been able to relocate our alternative school, and we will be relocating two more schools. So, I mean, you know, there's a lot of work that's happening. We've got, you know, our all-high stadium that we're looking at. You're gonna hear a lot about a lot tonight. So we're moving at lightning speed to handle a lot of moving parts. And, you know, I'm proud of the work that these gentlemen are doing. I don't know when Men's, International Men's Month is, but I think we can lose them this month, we'll share with them this month. And I'll turn it over to Chief Barnes.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everybody. So I'm here to present an update on the 23-24 budget process and then an update on our ESSR spending. So Ed, me, our first slide, please. Our next slide, please. Thank you. I always like to start where I left off at the last presentation or prior meeting. What you see here is our 23-24 Level One projection. It's a benchmark and a starting point. It's called a Maintenance of Effort Budget. It's based upon the factors we know and that we project out prior to us getting really into the budget process. What I reported last month is, in the blue column, that our Level One projections call for a $39.8 million deficit next year. Keep in mind, the column to the left, the first column, the current year budget projects a $34.6 million deficit. Going back to the blue column and the Level One budget, what this included, if you look at the state aid number in the revenue section, it included a governor's budget, which called for a $77.9 million increase in overall state aid and a $71.1 million increase in foundation aid. So that's the basis that we built, that's the basis that we built our Level One budget projection on. Now, the question often is, where does all that money go?
Excuse me, can everybody mute your phones, please, and your computers? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. So everybody is, okay, that's a lot of extra money. Where does it go? Well, if you look at the bottom half, the expenditure sections of the blue column, salaries and overtime. This includes, we do very detailed salary projections for all 4,900 FTEs in the general fund. So there's 11 million of that is increases due to contract step and longevity increases. The next line, contingency, that line includes $50.9 billion for a potential BTF settlement. That's what the BTF salaries in Orton might go up if we settle a contract. If you go down to the facilities rental line, that could go up a million dollars as we get more information on additional space we may lease next year. And then the last line I'd like you to take a look at is the transfers and debt service. That amount is projected to go up about 8.9 million next year. While our debt service payments are going down, we will be using transfers to capital to fund some of the projects that David will be talking about later. So where does that huge increase in state aid go? I think clearly we just spelled it out. Salary increases, a BTF contract settlement, increases in transfer to capital, and of course, increased charter tuitions. Ed, me, next slide. Edmire, next slide. So here are the updates. I'll start with the revenues. The Governor's Budget Proposal was released on February 1st. The Level 1 revenues, which I just talked about, they were based upon something called the November database. The state has, say, a $150 billion budget. The allocations to every specific school district are based upon submissions we make every September and then are then updated throughout the year. So their database was updated in February, okay? And what that resulted in is a decrease in our state aid revenues of 3.9 million. And that was due to a drop in our enrollments and thus our foundation aid. So that's the expected changes that we see every year, based upon the timing of the databases. But I think it also powerfully shows something we had talked about in prior meetings. Foundation aid, our biggest aid item, is based on our enrollments. And while our enrollments are decreasing, are decreasing at a slower rate than they have in the past four years, we are still down across every grade group. Enrollments are high schools, elementaries, were in the four years that foundation aid is based upon. So that's the bad news. The good news is, our total state aid is still projected to be $73.7 million more than the current year. And our foundation aid will be 69.2 million greater than our current year. So still unprecedented, hugely positive state aid numbers. The table below, if you take a look at the pink column, those are our current year state aid revenues, 845 million. The Governor's Budget is in green, that's the Level 1 revenue. The first blue column, that's the updated database that showed declines in enrollments as the state's calculations caught up to our data. Still, it's for $918 million. That's $3.9 million less than the Level 1 revenues we projected. I got to end this, it's important we understand how foundation aid is really calculated, but I got to end this with the yellow column. Our total state aid revenues are still up $73.6 million from the current year, and our foundation aid is up 69.1 million. Unprecedented increases. And that'll be the basis for a successful budget year. Edmire, next slide. These kind of changes that I just noted in the revenues, we monitor, track, they're incorporated into all our budget procedures and policies. The next slide, I'll give you an expenditure update. We had in-person group sessions, group training sessions, they're now completed. They were attended by approximately 60 staff, that's a good number. Where we are on department budget entry. The due date for all what we call Level 2 department budget requests is March 17th. All departments are required to review the staff projections that we put into the MUNIS module. They are to enter detailed requests for all non-staff items. And lastly, they submit new spending request forms for any dollar counts or FTEs above and beyond the current year. We have a full staff of budget liaisons assigned. All the departments and cost centers know who their liaisons are. I'm very confident that that March 17th date will be hit. The second part of our budget process is the school-based budget process. School-based budget books are due back to the ASLs March 10th. They've had plenty of meetings, lots of communication, really healthy give and take. Marriott Wood heads up this part of the process. So the school-based budget books are due back to the ASLs March 10th, which is like Friday. The school-based budget approval meetings will then be conducted April 10th to the 14th. That's when the books are all wrapped up and ready to go. But please note, all unbudgeted school-based budget requests, things that schools need and can justify above and beyond what their enrollments and special aid and ELL counts dictate from a formula basis, they're going to be collected by the ASLs, they'll be consolidated by the budget department and presented to the superintendent for review. So during April, we'll have all the department budgets in, all the school-based budgets approved, we'll have all the unbudgeted requests assembled, and the superintendent will receive the first analysis of the Level 2 budgets, including, excuse me, department budgets, school-based budgets, new spending requests, and school-based budget unbudgeted requests. It's going to get very busy, but we've got a great process in place. Schools and the departments have been very cooperative, so we'll have everything put together to start our analysis in it. So that about wraps up where I am with your 23-24 budget update. It's a busy time of year, but everything's going pretty well right now. Very well. My next topic is an ARPSER update. Edmire, next slide. Again, I just want to start off where we left off in the prior meeting. The table you see here is our revised three-year plan, which totals $289.6 million. The ARPSER funding was broken up into two buckets. ESSER 2, which was $89.2 million, and ESSER 3, which is 200 million, 200.4 million. And there's the budgets that we submitted to the state, and that plan was approved. It's since been revised, but that's the plan we're operating on here from a budgeted standpoint. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Keep in mind the notes at the bottom. The 21-22 year, it's been closed out, audited, everything's fine. All unspent dollars from 21-22 were rolled forward and repurposed into our current year The current year 22-23 budget is still being revised. I'll talk about that in a minute. It's really a living document with a lot of moving parts. However, one thing to note, that any additional items that are put in there, they have to be offset by an equal dollar amount of cuts. We now have the budget balanced, we've communicated to the state that we have, so anything new added, offsetting cuts must be made, dollar for dollar. The last thing to note on this page is the ESSER 2 grant, that first line with $89.2 million. Believe it or not, it ends September of 2023. And our full final reconciled cost, they must be submitted to the state by October. It's closing out a grant that size is quite a process, but that part of our ESSER is coming to an end this year. And we have to ensure that we spend that $89.2 million, and we will.
Yes, we will. Yes, we will. Yes, we will.
Edmire, next slide. Okay, so the current year budget, 22-23, what we just looked at was the three-year plan. This is our current year budget. It's for $158.4 million. Across the two grants, ESSER 2 and ESSER 3, we've spent $47.5 million to date, and we've encumbered $29.7 million. So we have $81.2 million available in the current year's budget. Two things I want to stress here. If you look at the ESSER 2 row, you see that available, 27.7 million? That may be used as part of the BTF settlement, if it's settled this fiscal year or before January 30th. That's a good thing. And that ESSER 2, the budget for $48.9 million, will be fully spent because that grant, again, has to be closed out. So keep those two factors in mind, that grant will be fully paid, fully spent. Then what we have going forward is just the ESSER 3 next year. There's so much activity in our ARPSER, what seems like an eternity, but it's only been two years. A lot of good things have been put in there and spent out. Building improvements to plants, IT equipment and network services, after-school programming, summer school, security equipment and supplies, security guards, and community school organizations, the RFPQ. What's in that budget right now was 1.1 million, but I speak with Dr. Reynolds on a monthly, twice a month, on this item. We're fully committed to funding that further as that program grows. Edmire, next slide. So some important dates are really coming up with our ESSER. On March 1st, we submitted the revised ESSER 2 budget to the state for approval. On March 15th, we will submit the revised ESSER 3 budget to the state for approval. I think everybody here knows that many, many revisions that have been made up and down and reprioritized, all for good reasons over the past year and a half since we first got approval. It's time that we submit to the state and get approval on all those revisions and spending that was already incurred. We're very confident we will, but you always need the formal state approval for certain things we put in there, like improvements to the stadiums, like the BTF contract settlement. We need their formal approval, and that's why we're getting these in now. The third point, that ESSER 2 grant ends September 30th. It has to be closed out and submitted to the state for reimbursement by October 30th. This part of our ESSER is over, so only the ESSER 3 grant remains in 23-24. In April of 2023, as part of our 23-24 budget process, remember, we actually, we focus here on the general fund, as we should, but we got general fund, we got 40 million in food service, we got 130 million in F funds, we'll have another 100 million in our ESSER left, and then we got a bunch in our debt service. So there's quite a bit of other funds that we incorporate into our budget process. But so as part of that, the budget process for grants this year, grants will be meeting with all the departments to review the current revised ESSER 3, the last year of spending. April 1st, all requisitions have to be entered for the ESSER 2 grant. That's a hard deadline. We are communicating on a weekly basis to ASLs, departments, cabinet and division heads, the debt grant sending, and all requisitions, you know, for approved projects, they have to be entered by April 1st. And then the last thing about our ESSER, with ESSER 2 ending, the state will be in here auditing those in the fall of 2023. We're very confident everything will turn out well, but again, that's where we are in the process. Edmire, last slide. Just some final comments on our ESSER, especially with Mr. Hurd sitting here. Field improvement projects were considered to be not allowed for our ESSER. So it's just important to note, those projects are being funded through general fund transfers to capital. So we use some unorthodox methods of financing to make sure all this went through. A portion of the remaining our ESSER funds may be used for a BTF contract settlement. We've said that for months now. Further revisions to the 22-23 budget may occur. Any additional items that are put in there have to be offset by equal dollar amount of cuts. And this has really become a balancing act, as our ESSER is winding down between budget requests, capital spending needs, and projected spending. We have to balance, you know, new requests that do come in from time to time, a rather complicated and condensed capital spending environment, which the superintendent noted. And we always have to make sure we spend every dollar. So it's a balancing act. Again, we've submitted, we're submitting ESSER 2, we're submitting ESSER 3 next week to the state for approval. Once we get that formal, that'll just make us feel better. And lastly, I provided a very detailed ARPSER budget, including the FTEs, maybe two meetings ago. So we need to begin discussing the phase-out of our ESSER at the end of next year. However, it's premature to move any ARPSER-funded positions to the general fund until the BTF contract is settled, our ESSER spending projections are updated, and alternative funding sources, either the general fund or other grants, are identified for current projects currently in our, that includes summer school, after-school, and other programs. Those are currently in our ESSER, those have to be returned to the general fund. So I just thought I'd make a note because that's a topic of great interest, but we can't consider any of that for 23-24 budget, it'll be the following year. Thank you for your time. I know I can talk fast, so if you have any questions.
I think you've done a very good presentation. I just want to point out that you stated in our 23-24 budget that $50.9 million is in our contingency for the BTF contract. And you also stated that our entire foundation aid increase was 69... 69 million.
69.2 million.
So 73.56% of every dime we got for foundation aid increase is going to show our teachers our commitment to give them a fair contract settlement. And I think that should be noted, that we have put that kind of level of priority on the teachers. And I don't think you can do any more than that. 73.55% of the entire foundation increase. I think we need to thank our legislative leaders, elected officials, for giving us that kind of increase in foundation aid. And I'm sure there's many things that they would like us to do with that. So we thank Senator Kennedy, Crystal People Stokes, the Majority Leader, but that's where the big bulk of our money is going. And I just wanted to make sure that was pointed out. The other thing was that charter tuitions, increasing $11.6 million. That's a pretty big hit. Pretty big hit use of our monies. The other thing I think I want to point out to the board is it's very clearly stated in here, there are 230 FTEs sitting in that ESSER, our ESSER funding. So our ESSER funding was to address that learning lag, and it's still here, but at least we put a lot of money and FTEs into it, and now we're going to have to find a way to either lobby our legislators to give us, or in our federal government, to give us continuation or another program, or we're going to have some hard decisions to be made. The last thing I want to point out before I turn to, over to each of our board members to ask whatever questions they like, is that we are in the phase where our principals, these principals that gave us such a wonderful presentation earlier today, and we're telling them, tell us what they need. them, tell us what they need, they're, this, this, this month, they have their deadlines to submit their school-based budgets. And in that is also going to be the unfunded items that they feel they need, and that's going to be given to the superintendent for review, and I'm hoping that the superintendent will share some of that with the board, so that we can see what areas that the, our principals are struggling with, and additional resources that may be needed to put, be put into an equity overlay. With that, I'd like to open it up to our board members for any questions, and I'd like to go in alphabetical order, starting with you, President Sharon Belton-Cotman. That's all right. Oh, wait a minute, no, sorry, starting with Kathy Evans-Brown. You're first.
Actually, Belton comes before Brown, but Kathy can go first.
Yeah, um, yeah, I just want to ditto everything Chairwoman Paulette Woods mentioned. Thank you, Mr. Barnes, for another robust presentation on our finances. It's clear, you pointed out dates that are critical, as well as needs of school-based environments. So I'll be talking with my principals to find out if they need any additional accommodations for the budget before it's time to submit it. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Sharon Belton-Cotman.
So, so thank you. So I want to share that last week, Buffalo was the, we got, it was a brunt of a joke when everyone was looking at the increase in revenue from their city government, that we had not had an increase for nineteen years. The suggestion was that we add money to our budget and go to the common council and ask for it, something that has never been done. And so when we talk about losing positions, and we have not had an increase in nineteen years from our city government, I think that it is worth having a conversation about the, having the city fund something more so than what they've done in the past. So the other thing is, is that when we talked before about the school-based budget, my understanding was that we were going to use the current enrollment in the schools. Somehow or another, that did not trickle down, I'm being told, to the principals. So I do not understand why we have situations where we have principals that have more students than on bed's day, and their budgeting reflects less. One particular school has fifty more students than bed day, and they are required to use the bed's day. So what happened to that conversation? Because I thought it was clear from the board that we were going to do something different this year based on equity, but somehow or another, that's not what I'm being told has happened, that happened. Am I confused? Did the principals I talked to confused, or, or was this board confused?
No, we're, the formulas, the student counts are double and triple checked, including E L L and sped by school, and then they're actually, because they're classroom-based, the classroom-sized basis, everybody's enrollments are very fairly reflected. Now, there's always one or two aberrations, but I must say, Mrs. Cotman, those principals work very closely with Marie Wood, very closely. We don't penalize schools when their actual, just hang on, when their actual counts come in well below beds. And in any case where there's a substantial increase over beds, which we don't know until after the budget year's over, we can address that. Now, what we did absolutely put into our policies and procedures is this year, if vacancies, if budgeted staff are left vacant, the schools will be allowed to use that money. That's what we agreed to, we put in our procedures, and we've been communicating out.
So when are they supposed to use the money? Are we back to six months? Let's deal with each one of these. We're back to six months? That they have to wait six months, go without six months of having staff, and then we're allowed them to use the money? Because we didn't like that, when you brought that before us the last time. We didn't feel that to run a building, someone should wait six months to get some support in that the school year is almost over. So I heard, you know, that's, that's what was presented, I think, in a couple of.
Yeah, that is what was presented, because it's the first time we've rolled out this initiative, because we heard your concerns, and it's the right and fair thing to do, you're correct.
Do you feel that six months is a fair thing to do in a nine-month school year?
Actually, I do for the first thing, for the first year rollout. Being the person who sees all the requests and the changes and the, oops, I didn't really want that program, now I want another one, we have to put some parameters around it, or else it just becomes a free throw, to be frank.
Okay, so I'm not pleased with six months. I don't think if Terry was here, she would be pleased with six months, and I don't think the board is pleased with six months. What you're saying is, out of a nine-month year, if you, if human resource cannot fill a position, that I have to wait six months before I can give resources or into the building? That's not fair. That's not what we, that's not fair. So if it needs, if it needs an act of the board to change it, then we'll have to do that. I don't have a problem with that. Okay? As we roll it out, I feel that, you know, in August, that of the teachers that a school needs, I have schools that have not had teachers for three consecutive years in the same subject, and their money has been pulled out and been reassigned at this point. What I'm trying to get you to understand is, is that we cannot have a budget process that does not allow the principal to be able to make adjustments when staffing is not available. We just can't do it. And I need, look at that. The other piece to that is, is that the principals are telling me that the numbers they were given to work does not include their current enrollment. So there are principals that have fifty, eighty additional people, and it's not included in their current budget. Explain to me how you know going into the year, when you're doing a budget, that you know in advance that you don't, you have fifty additional students that you are supposed to find resources for, and it's not included in your numbers? That's not fair.
Okay, I'll take each one. If you would like to please meet with Maria Wood and myself, and we'll walk you through why we picked the six-month mark for the usage. Let us walk you through.
You fix it for a financial reason, Mr. Barnes. I'm talking about an academic reason here, and I understand you're trying to be fiscally responsible, but our kids are not getting the resources. How do you justify a substitute Spanish teacher who technically can't even speak Spanish, okay, teaching kids and not allowing that principal to get additional resources? It's not fair. It's not what equity looks like. However, if I'm one of those schools who everybody wants to go to, I have all my staff. Meanwhile, over here, I'm one of these teachers that nobody wants to come to my school, and I don't have my staff, and no, nothing is being done to make sure that I get my staff until six months into, or allowing me to use that money until six months into the process? That's not fair. That's not fair to both of us. And we have, and I can't, I can't live with that. That's not fair.
Mrs. Cotman, I really would love to follow up with a meeting, with me, you, and Maria.
I would be happy to meet with you, but understand, when I brought that to my principals, my principal said, so in essence, you know in August that I'm looking for staff, so you want me to go August, September, October, November, December, and January, and then you're going to give me the resources that I need in my building? That's not right. It's not right.
I hear you loud and clear. I think this meeting would be very beneficial to all of us.
Okay, I'll be happy to have it. Paulette Woods, you can be there, and we can have a superintendent there, because, and maybe we should have the union president there for the principals, because in fairness to them, for them to wait six months to get resources in a nine-month year is not fair to me. I don't see it. I don't see that that's how we should do it. Especially when that money goes to the general fund every year, the money that's not being used, so it's not as if the money's not being delegated automatically to the general fund, okay? We, we have a bank of a general fund of what, eleven million every year? We get eleven million easily every year in our general fund from positions that are not filled? How do you think this is supposed to happen for those children in those buildings? So I'll be happy to have that meeting. Meanwhile, back at the ranch, you promised us that the current budget would reflect the students that are in the building, and I don't care if the, if it went down or what. It is not fair for you to have one school that has over two hundred and fifty additional students, and they do not have it, and their budget is based on that, and they have not had it for the past five years, and they continue to get an enrollment of over eight hundred every year. It's not fair. We have to move those resources to benefit the children, and if that, if that school does not have the students, they should not be getting the staffing, and that's only fair.
Sharon, I, I believe that that's what the meeting would be, to make sure that the counts, if there's a discrepancy in the counts, that we can address it and correct it in this budget process. That's what, that's what the meeting would be.
Exactly.
Because Maria has met with the principals.
And I think it's a good time to do it. You know, we know we have a charter school that is closing. I've already set up a meeting with the principal. We're setting up some tour dates so that, you know, we can go out and do what we got to do. So we do anticipate that, you know, our enrollment numbers may be increasing, so it's a good time for us to sit down and have a conversation like that.
I agree.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Also, Sharon, this is, this, this year is very unusual. This is one time where vacancy savings is, 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 is critical, because it's being used to address some of those capital projects that are so absolutely dear to your heart, Bennett. We need space for our students. So I think that's something that's going to be informative to you. I think you'd like to take a look at that, because this year.
I'd be happy to take it, but capital improvements does not have preference over education in the classrooms, okay? So you know what? Our ancestors used to get educated wherever they could. So I want to make sure that the children get the resources, of course, I want them to be comfortable, but I want to make sure that when a budget is set up, that the principal in good faith lists, and I have one principal that has seven openings, okay, seven openings, and, and he and she has not been able to get any resources to support that, okay? So we have a lot to look at. I'll be happy to do that, but I'm going to continue to advocate for equity in these buildings. Thank you.
The only other thing I wanted you to know is that we did request, and our superintendent is, is providing us an additional report by school on vacancies, so each board member can review if there is a situation where you have significant vacancies. So that's something, you're right, we need to definitely always monitor.
I think that report needs to reflect subject matter as well, and how long it's been a vacant position. I have no understanding how positions can exist for three and four, vacant in three and four years, and staff, and these schools, these children are not getting enough support that they should get. I, I gotta be honest with you, one of my principals the other day did not have a math teacher. The principal went into the classroom and started teaching math. Okay, that's the type of wherewithalness that I need to see. So if we don't have a Spanish teacher, then I guess I need the person who's running languages to come out of City Hall and go in there and start teaching some classes, and maybe we'll find some, find some teachers in a better way. But we cannot continue to have these kids not getting what they need in these buildings. It just can't continue. Thank you.
Next, let's see, Cotman.
I got it.
Did that hurt?
Yes.
Okay. Board member hurt.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Chairwoman, Chairwoman Woods. I'd like to come out, first of all, to say that I often visit a lot of suburban schools here in, in, in Western New York, and I also like to see the programs that they offer, and I compare them to the programs that we have here in our, in our district. And from there, I see some of the needs that we have in our district, and I see some of the needs they have in the suburban districts. And often when I travel, I visit schools in those areas also across the country. And some of the things that they come to mind is first, listen to the president's Often we go to schools and we see classrooms that's, that's vacant, and we see equipment inside the classrooms that's not being used because they don't have a teacher to, to fill that role. And I know this district has been working very hard to, to fill those roles and those needs for our, for our building. And I know that, I'm going to speak for this district when I, when I say that they looking underneath rocks to try to find people to come teach, and I know board members, and I've seen board members, including myself, that, that stop people on the streets and ask them what they're doing, and they want to teach, and, and I work with, tell me how McGee and, over in H R department, because I send her people all, all the time, you know, young people, people that's in school, people that's looking for jobs and work to come work in our district to try to help us out. And I encourage everybody to, to take those steps and those means about helping fill these roles, because this argument is, is, is ongoing, it's been long, but I know the stresses that it has to find accredited teachers to fill these positions. I'm glad Dr. Williams talked about the charter school and the initiative she made about capturing those children and, and, and those educators at, at the charter school to bring back here to the district, so we can try to fill some of these needs. But I, I know it's a hard struggle, it's a hard struggle from our finance side, a hard struggle from our H R side, it's a hard struggle within the buildings and our kids, but our kids are the ones who suffer the most, and those are the ones who being penalized, you know, for the work that we're not doing, or work we can't do. Let's, let's, as a board, trying to find some initiatives, you know, to help support the district and try to, try to find these means. She's right, our kids are suffering, our kids are losing out. They have programs that they're supposed to go to school for that they cannot take. We have subs taking long-term positions. And anyway, we can try to grow that, and I know we take initiatives, going to Puerto Rico, I know we going to New York and, and middle, middle New York and reaching out, but at the same time, people are coming to Buffalo and snatching our administrative assistance away, and our teachers away from Buffalo also, so it's just as difficult. Now, with that being said, I'm coming to you like when the guy's in the corner that be begging for money. So what I want to see is, first of all, one thing I always wanted to see was hot, hot food in all our schools, cafeterias in our buildings. That's one thing that I want to see, and I'm begging for this, because our kids deserve, just like every other kid in our suburban districts and, and some schools, buildings that's here in Buffalo, they deserve hot lunches. So let's take that money and try to, and try to afford that, see what we can do, some capital planning. Another thing, we have some, our high project, which, which we've been starting off for several years now, and getting, getting the completion for that, so we can have Title Nine and Section Six competitions right here in, in Buffalo, and we, we can start re-incurring monies from ticket sales and, and bringing more entities here, practice facilities for, for also colleges that want to use our fields, high school literally, you know, there's more money we can incur by the users of the fields. The indigenous school, which has a lot of critical needs, and one school that we just took a tour of that, that I'm, I'm, I've, I've been the biggest opponent of, is Public School Thirty-One. I feel it needs the most help in, in the city of Buffalo, and we really need to work to get these things done with the monies that we have. I'm not quite sure, you know, of our, we talk about our capital spending needs and our projected spending, it's a lot of money that we need to spend. The modified sports program encompasses six schools that we want to convert to athletic programs. We, we need this, and if we're going to wisely spend this money, let's spend this money wisely towards programs that's going to be beneficial to our kids. We know that sports bring kids into the buildings to keep their attention, and those that play sports learn more. We got different aspects that's, that's delivered to it also with the, with the mentoring, the coaching, with community coaching, counseling, and tutoring, all for those aspects is, is, is great for our kids and families, as we talk about some of the things that we talked about today. And also new stadium projects and sports fields. So, so these are some of the things I'd like to see this district go, go with, we're working on some of them now, but we want to make sure that, that we keep a steady hand as we move forward, that we have another year to, to, to find the jackson for this money and spend it, that we earmark this money. That we earmark this money for these needs for our kids. And also, like you said, education is our most prominent need, but we also know these other elements bring kids to the buildings. And I don't want to receive, I've worked in the prison before and I don't want everyone to see our kids walk into a building that's looking like a prison. It's not.
You have a sweet voice.
Talking to me?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Hurt. My granddaughter has been reaching out to talk to me all night and she got a new phone and she just sent me a solo. I'm sorry, the phone, sorry.
I was gonna start singing. I was gonna start singing.
The third portion of our presentation is going to be the capital budget.
Capital spending.
And capital budget planning. And our chief operating officer, David Hill, will be addressing those concerns. Okay?
Thank you Chairwoman Woods, but right now I'll be talking about these dollars amount. I want to make sure we've got focus on these dollar amounts for these projects and programs. We doing a slew of things, you know, with our district. Dr. Tanja Williams is doing a wonderful job and making sure that we reach all departments and all needs, but these are some of the critical things we're going to need going forward. Thank you. I'll rest. Are you at the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. And Reverend Board Member, I believe you're next.
Transit, so if there's some extra noise, forgive me. Mostly I think that we just, I think some future presentations drilling down on the spending we're doing per student, how we identify our deepest areas of need and ways in which to ensure that our processes support what's happening in the classroom is probably the best way to move forward. I look forward to hearing more on all of those subjects.
Thank you Board Member Rivera. Board Member Shuda, Terry Shuda?
Yes, first of all, I want to concur with Board President that it is very frustrating to be a building principal and to be short-staffed and to wait. And I appreciate her advocacy for the school buildings. I would like if that would be a possibility for me to also attend that meeting. I was on the original team of school-based budget. As we developed it, maybe, I don't know, Dr. Hill's, how many years ago was that? And Dr. Williams, maybe 15, 20, I can't even remember, but we.
2012.
2012, right, right. So I knew it's been a long time and that was very life-changing for so many of us. And so I appreciate Mr. Barnes, your hard work and your diligence. And like, let's have the conversation. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Board Member Scott.
Thank you Chairwoman Woods. Mr. Barnes, so charter enrollments and charter tuition, is it going up? But it looks like our charter supplemental aid from the state is going down. Did I read that correctly and what's the explanation for it?
Sure. On the revenue side, charter supplemental, that was the change you saw was because of the timing of the databases. The first run was November, second run was February. Even the charter counts, it got updated in the updated database and they decreased from the prior database. They're up overall, but they've decreased from database to database.
The enrollments decreased?
The enrollments recorded in the database.
Okay.
It's how foundation aid works and is allocated. So they decreased in the database update. However, overall, our charter enrollments are expected to be up another 700 or so next year. And that will, you take 700 times 14,800 dollars, that's what the tuition will go up. Plus the sped charges of another like $3,000 per kid. So on the revenue slide you saw was a decrease in the reported charter enrollments in the database. Our budgets are based on the net increase in charter schools. And they'll be up another 600 and tuitions will be up 8 to 11 million dollars next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board Member Scott?
I'm all set. Thank you Chairwoman Woods.
Okay, let's see. All right.
Mr. Scott, real quick, I know you'll be happy to hear this. We resumed on a more robust level our physical audits of charter school enrollments. We've just finished up, I think, audits of six schools. The last West Minister being today and I'll have to report to the board when those are completed.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions on the budget and our esser, we still have a presentation, a very important presentation on our capital budget planning from our chief operating officer, David Hills. Do you want to say anything, Madam Superintendent?
No, just real quickly to say that, you know, I know we have a lot of priorities. We've got a lot of needs and we do really have a finite amount of resources. So I am looking forward also to the conversation because equity is important. And we do want to make sure that, you know, we're maximizing whatever our finite amount of resources are. So, you know, I'll look forward to that conversation and that meeting that we'll have.
Thank you then. Chief Operating Officer Hill, would you like to begin your presentation?
Absolutely. Thank you Chairperson Woods. The Admiral, can you put up the PowerPoint? Thank you. So this, we've had a capital planning committee that started meeting in early December. We've met seven times to really start to build a framework and direction for a five-year plan. What I'm going to present tonight is kind of capturing where those discussions have gone. And it's our launch plan for starting the process of establishing a five-year plan. And it's the framework that we're going to be working under. Next slide Admiral. So our next level goals are to renew relationship with our families and students and capital investment is important there. Strong community schools, capital investment's important. Our innovative high school programming, capital investment is important to support those new and innovative high schools. And you'll notice I'll talk a lot about some of our high school programs and how we can support them. Service for our neediest children and families and I didn't highlight it, but really to revive our relationship with our teachers and principals. You give people state-of-the-art arenas to function in and they will give you state-of-the-art performance. Next slide. The 5 by 25 to really make sure that we are doing everything we can over the next several years to bring Buffalo Public Schools to the top level of service to our students. Using partners, shooting for excellence, having safety and security at our core and making sure that there is a, again, the best format for opportunity to achieve the gaps to be compressed and eliminated. Next slide. So we're going to look at enrollment trends, the current status of our capital portfolio, our stages of planning and where we're at currently. Next slide. So in looking at enrollment, Lauren Ebony and I really kind of looked at ways to capture a snapshot of enrollment trends and we wound up going with the end of October numbers. When we looked at these large grade level bands of preschool, pre-K and kindergarten, first through fourth grade, fifth through eighth grade, ninth through 12th grade and our ungraded students that are in probably an alternative assessment setting. Several of them may be with us till they're 21. When we looked at three points in the year over this 10-year period, there was very little fluctuation in those big bands. There were fluctuations grade level to grade level over the school year from bed stay to end of the year. There were fluctuations at individual schools, but when we took a big picture, we didn't see much fluctuating throughout the year. It did tend to be that February was a little marginally higher and then it tapered off towards the end of the year. So we went with October 31st mostly because I was compiling this in December and that was the, I had the most recent data for that year. So if you look at our overall, our preschool, pre-K and kindergarten, we started in 2013 with about 4,787. We're down to about 4,089. In 2013 for our first through fourth grade, and this is important, these are important bands because a lot of our schools are programmed according to these bands. So when we're looking at how we allocate capital resources, we want to make sure that we're best positioned to service our students. During this time of 2013 to 22, it must be noted that we have invested heavily in smaller class sizes, particularly at the under-third grade level. So when you have 1,300 students who maybe have, we've lost since 2013, those class sizes, we may not need less rooms because we may have smaller class sizes. Middle level, we've seen a loss of 1,400 students over that time. High school, it's interesting to look at that. We started out with 8,987 ninth through 12th grade students and we wound up this year with 9,411. We've gained 424 students over that time, but the past several years, we've been losing students from our high point in 2019. And our ungraded students that population remains fairly constant. And those totals have changed over the past, since 2013. We're about 3,000 students down from where we were at. Now, next slide please. I think if we see these level bands, we can see where are the, the blue band, we saw a strong dip with COVID and we're climbing back up to those levels where we're at. That was actually a fairly stable number. With our high school, you can see we peaked in 2018, 2019. And that was at the height of our new and innovative high schools coming online. Since then, we've seen the increased graduation rate and I hate to say it, but when you increase graduation rate and really significantly reduce the number of fifth-year students are in your high schools, you also reduce the number of the total population. So we made, some of that dip may be part of our success in improving our graduation rates. Elementary, first through fourth grade, we've seen the decline since 2015. And our middle level had been fairly steady until 2018, 2019, where we've seen this late decline. That fairly well matches the elementary. Now, I looked at some of the suburban districts. I do not see any suburban district that's had a significant increase. Some have lost 20. I found one 60-year, 60 student increase from year to year. So, and since this point in 2018, which was kind of our high point in the past couple of years, we've lost a lot of students and those students haven't necessarily all gone to charter schools. Charter school enrollment hasn't increased by that amount. So I think one of our questions is, how can we retain those students and bring them back? Next slide. This is another way of capturing that data. Again, you see the high school increase over 10 years, but again, that's a decrease over the past several years. In looking at the 2020 census data and the 2010 census data, remember, really 2020 will reflect 2018 and 2019 counting. We gained 6.5% in our city, which we outpaced Rochester, outpaced Syracuse. So we need to look at why is it that we gave people? And how can we look at positioning the Buffalo Public Schools to capture those people? Next slide. So we're going to look at the current status. Next slide. We've done, we've done our, in fact, I need to take preliminary off of this. The building condition survey has been finalized. Juan Perez is on to update us on the building condition survey. Juan, are you able to join us? Don't go ahead. Head back Admiral. Juan, are you able to join on? I see his name. So I'm going to run through it. We have identified in the building condition survey, there's two boxes. It's several thousand pages. We're in the process of extracting the executive summaries, but this is the first time we've done a comprehensive survey where we not only did our active school sites, but we did our abandoned buildings, we did City Hall, we did every single leased space. So we have building condition surveys on every single place where we have students or we have control over the site. So we have identified about $360 million in necessary maintenance. And what that means is that things that over the next five years, we will need to address in order to have satisfactory occupancy of our buildings. So it's not necessarily something that's failed right now, but it's something that's likely to fail over the next five years. So that $360 million is significant. It does not include upgrades to address programming needs, to address athletics. It simply includes things like failed roofing systems, heating and HVAC systems, any electric panel systems, anything like that that needs to be done. Windows, areas around the school grounds, things that are critical to operations from the perspective of occupancy. The final report is complete. It was uploaded in the three days before March 1st. The final seven reports were uploaded right on March 1st. The state is looking through them and they will be public facing very soon. We will let everyone know. We're also going through the reports and we're pulling out the executive summaries so we can provide a more succinct packet for the board. It's a pretty massive trove and we're also taking those building condition surveys and we will then create the scope of work for the next five years that we will send to the state to address those capital needs. Next slide. In the building condition survey, the highest concern building conditions, and these are simply cash value, the highest numbers. There may be other buildings with 100 little things, but you could have a building with one or two things that they both could be very high-ticket numbers, items. School 19, school 31, school 37, school 72, school 82, school 89, 95, 131. You'll notice that there's a school number and a location number. State Ed thinks of our schools and location numbers. We think of schools and program numbers. So when we talk to State Ed, we always will talk about the location, which is why you see school 131 at 86. And it's why everyone in my department still calls I-Prep 202 and everyone else calls it 198. So I have to learn to translate those for people because we'll all talk in State Ed location numbers. 195, 198, 208, 304 and 305 were all big-ticket items and that does not include the abandoned buildings. School 28 particularly came back with a high price tag for building conditions also. with a high, high price tag for building conditions also. Next slide, please. So we have leased school locations. We lease a location on Edward Street, not our entire location. We own the location on Virginia Street, but Adult Education is in part in a leased facility. Da Vinci, we lease currently at Madonna Hall on Porter and Fargo. Research Lab, we are leasing at TriMaine. Buffalo Culinary, OTC, we are leasing at 75 West Geron. Emerson Culinary, 76 Chippewa, and School 84, we also lease. There are always, a lease has to be 15 years to be adable. The only adable period of time for the lease is 15 years. Once we get past that, very often, any conditions work we have to do is not state adable. So we get into long-term issues. We, we've had issues at Emerson and Chippewa that we have to do capital improvements, and the terms of our lease make us responsible for them, but they're not adable projects. Fortunately, the last thing we had to do was, not fortunately, was because of the storm, so we are hoping that we can get FEMA aid. Next slide. We have underwrite renovated schools where we do not have students, but they are still under our control as district sites. School 4 at 425 South Park, we have various adults in there, and we also have our CCI program of adult ed in there. School 8 is currently vacant at 165 East Unica. School 12 on Ash Street, we use central registration special ed. There's dot, dot, dots there because there's multilingual. There's McKinney-Vento. There are a lot of folks operating out of School 12. School 2028 is our Center for Innovation, Technology, and Training. School 171 is on East Sullivan. That is currently vacant. School 187 currently is partially vacant, but we have our textbook operation and some other storage at that location. So those sites are all ours. Some of them are completely empty. Some of them we use every day for various services. Next slide. We have offices everywhere. School 4, 309, 208, School 12, School 99, School 19. Now the 19 offices, some of those are part-time, so that's not necessarily the same as full-time staff. We have, at MST, we have people in City Hall. We have people at 64 Bailey, which we, we have people in the commissary, 10, 10 plus other staff. That building can have between 30 and 60 people working at it at any given date, depending on the time of year. School 2813 and a lot of other staff too, other companies we work with. 389 Virginia, Adult Education, that includes the Edward Street site. So that's actually two sites. Bailey, which is our service center, three trades, three supervisors are trade, and then we also have all our tradesmen that work out of Bailey. I think 59 is our current count. Joseph Jones Service Center, eight, and other staff, laborers that work out of there, transportation. We have eight staff plus bus aides that work out of there. So we have people scattered everywhere in office staff. Next slide. Athletics facilities. What we are looking at currently, we just did an initial kickoff for design today, and we're building a timeline. We're going to have some additional meetings for feedback on design. Phase three for All High Stadium, remediation expansion of Charles Sting Bond Field at Riverside or an equivalent football field. Positive Field addition of athletic facility. JBW Field Enhasements, City Park Collaboration. We need soccer and lacrosse fields. The locations that have on current site possible, it's Positive Field, Olmsted, and MST have land nearby. Those athletic improvements, some of, by and large, are not adable. So they are not, and they have not been something we can put under our eser. So we really have to look at, what do we need to do to make these improvements to our facilities? Next And this is, this is where we start to get into other things. Overall, our pool conditions need to be addressed. We need to increase Section 6 gym space, where we can look at Buckham Hall. That has a gym that will be Section 6 rated. If we bring 333 Clinton Street, which is performing arts online, that could be as part of an adable project. As is Buckham Hall, we can bring some more additional gym space, so we're not limited on the number of sites that can host Section 6 events. Now we have the last two bullets, our complete dreams, and there is no money anywhere for them, but it needs to be kept in line. A Section 6 capable district field house, which possibly foundation funding, and a Section 6 auditorium at least for, for, again, swimming, so we do not have just a couple Section 6 capable pools. City Honors is actually the only one we can use currently. So those, I do want to say that as we go on, we're going to be breaking into having an athletics facilities capital investment subcommittee. And one of the elements I'm going to address later are also the modified sports investing in those facilities. So, next slide. Okay, so our five-year strategic planning, this is where we're at. Next slide. After going through this process, the areas of concern, we have aging school sites across the district with significant needs. We have several locations that have unique and successful high schools that are in distressed settings. Da Vinci, middle, early college, research lab, and by, by kind of association, Louis J. Bennett, which currently is in a building that has two programs. Central Office, office staff and school buildings with students, and in a configuration that restricts collaboration and focus. Our central office services should be aligned to support students in buildings and be able to work together in a clear collaborative way. We have departments that are spread among addresses, spread among floors at City Hall. We do not have an emergency relocation swing site. We had a situation with Da Vinci where we had to do remote instruction because of catastrophic flood. We did not have an alternative to put them in while their services are restored. We came very close to losing electrical service yesterday at Hutch Tech with a known problem that's about seven years old that will be fixed in this, this next rotation of capital financing, but that's something we are not prepared. So having emergency relocation swing sites, poor presentation of our public-facing services. When you're a parent new to the Buffalo Public Schools, you pull into a parking lot at School 12 that doesn't necessarily say welcome. You, you talk to the people, you're welcome, but the facilities are not necessarily welcoming, and we are not, they're not adable because they're not sites with students in them. So we can maintain them. We can do massive improvements to those sites, but still, the kind of complete makeover is difficult to do when it's not an adable project from the state. And, well, I'll get to it later. Poor, and now, limit identified funding sources for athletic field upgrades. We have a lot that we need to do for the next generation of student athletes in the Buffalo Public Schools, and the, the building aid money is difficult. You could sometimes do quarter funding with incidental funding, but for some of the projects, particularly those that are not attached to a school, it, it's difficult to get State Ed funding for it. So that's, that's one of the areas of concern. We also have some proposed programs that we need to realize that there has been strong interest in, that we currently do not have providing a school for these programs in our capital projects, but we do need to keep them on our radar as, as items that the board has either passed resolutions on or expressed, expressed a desire to see, and that's the Barack Obama Leadership Academy for Young Men, Shirley Chisholm School of Leadership for Young Women. Both of those do have beds codes, but they are expiring and may have already expired on May, or March 1st. Expansion of School 54 to feed to a five-to-eight location, and a second City Honors location or IB middle-level school to bridge the gap for our students and make sure that we have equity for any student who wants a certain program. So we're, we're planning in several phases. The first phase is stabilization. As Dr. Williams said very clearly, we inherited a lot of crises. Not only were there some 15 to 20-year issues that never have been addressed, but the last building condition survey the state made us do was in 2015. So we are actually seven years out from our last building condition survey, and the pandemic did significantly disrupt not only the second survey. We were told to wait, but it also disrupted many of the projects that were going to go on. So we relocated the academy school to a permanent location. We relocated research lab to a temporary leased location. Establish a permanent and temporary location for Da Vinci and middle, early college, and that's to stabilize. Complete North Park Academy number 50 expansion. That, that expansion was populated. We are, there, there are still a couple cleanup things that are going on, particularly to get some of the food service equipment there. Implement budgeted capital improvements, things that we already put the money aside for, but we were not able to do over the pandemic season. The stairs at Bennett, roof projects, and also the stairs at Bennett, they are doing the plumbing for the heating system that will go under the stairs for the past several weeks, so that those, that those stairs will be worked on as soon as the weather breaks, and we have appropriate environment for pouring concrete. But the plumbing to hook the stairs to the boiler system is actually going on as we speak. There also was a scoped project for the stairs at Riverside, too. We had multiple roof projects that have been budgeted that we're working on, and many of the roofs we've had issues with over the past, particularly since the blizzard. Those roofs, war roofs, we were going to work on in prior approved projects. State Ed already has given us approval, and many of them, we already have gotten through a board resolution that went through in November. We have building envelope stabilization we're doing to make sure that problems with our soffits and our mortar and things like that are taken care of. And then we have systems upgrades. Part of that's our smart bond improvement, or the smart schools upgrades, the security systems, new fire panels, electrical systems upgraded. We have increased energy efficiency, but we've also, with the technology demands we have in many of our buildings, increased the needs we have for robust electrical panels. So that's stabilization. That's just getting a bucket out and getting as much water as we can out of the boat, so we have, we have the ability to continue our instructional mission. The second phase, next slide, is comprehensive assessment. So we've launched the capital planning committee. We've, we've worked with Jim to do a financial analysis of not only our needs, but where we can get short-term stabilization funding, because even though many of these projects are reimbursable, in order to reimburse them, we have to have the money upfront, and then we have to wait till the state send us, sends us that money. So there are two ways to do that, to write a check out of our reserves or our fund balance. Two, to borrow money through a bond issue. Three is through a joint schools construction board, which consolidates the borrowing ability of the district into a more rational process. The enrollment projections we've looked at, building condition surveys, and our five-year building conditions improvement plan, which is being developed off of the building condition survey. And I do have to make a clarification here. We are running two five-year plans in parallel. One is the one where we have to say after our building condition survey, this is what we're going to do over the next five years to fix this. The other one is our five-year plan to make much farther renovations to our capital capacity. So both of those are going to run in tandem, and they're going to work together, and then to work with community and school to engage them in this process of what is needed, how can we best serve the community. Next slide. So foundational actions, which is where we're engaged in, to propose a joint schools construction board. The joint schools construction board, I will go into further, but mainly what it does, this would be our phase six and seven of joint schools reconstruction. Everyone knows phase one through three. Those were the big splash reconstruction projects that went on. We also did a phase four and five that were more limited, but still were significant improvements. A joint schools construction board allow, you have to write legislation. You have to work with your legislatures. It has to be not only the district on the board, but it has to represent the interests of the city, and because the city does our financing. And it allows us to go to the state and say, these are the projects we're going to do. Start to develop a maximum cost allowance for each project, and go forward with bundling the financing. So we are able to do these projects and not have to take from our funds, not have to issue bits and pieces, individual bonds, would finance it as a bundle. And then as we are reimbursed, it comes back. And as you may remember, about six years ago, we were able to refinance some of our joint schools construction financing so, and to turn that money back towards capital projects. So it is, it's not, it's a way of financing so that we can get the reimbursement in and not have to suffer any in our day-to-day operations. We, we're submitting the licensed long-term planning document, long-term capital plan developed. And remember, I talked about those two parallel five-year plans. We, we need to identify two swing schools to remediate. We're in the process of doing that. School aid is identified as one. We are investigating with the state what we need to do, because there might be a mechanism to have some reimbursement for sweetened school work. So we're working with our Jamie and facilities to, to see how we can do that. Jennifer Pyle has been significantly helpful from the Big Five. I beg her for, to tell me what's going on, and to teach me like a kindergartner about two or three times a week, because she's done a lot of these projects with multiple schools. To initiate a potential mechanism for the acquisition and management of real property, we currently do not have the statutory authority as a city of over 125,000 residents to, as a school board, acquire property on our own. So to continue to investigate a mechanism that would allow us to do that, there's been substantial work done on that. To identify federal and other funding for energy and HVAC performance upgrades, there's money out there beyond state building aid for projects. The, the thing is, though, here, we cannot double dip. So we cannot have a federal project for energy efficiency and then go to the state to say, can you pay us a reimbursement for that project? It's the same thing with our eser. When we use our eser, we can't then go to the state and say, you got, can you reimburse us? Well, we could ask them, but they will say no, very forcefully. And we gather stakeholder feedback and input, which is the next phase. We do have a capital planning committee, and I do need to acknowledge President Kotman, Board Member Hurd, Chairperson Woods have been very active on that committee, and have really helped to shape it and direct it with innovative and energetic ideas. Next slide. Plan implementation, which is where we're not out. That'll be this end of the school year and early summer. Identify funding to support projects that are not adable for state, eligible for state Identify funding support projects that are not adable for state eligible for state building aid. Establish finance financing for capital improvement projects where possible, acquire real property or reposition existing buildings in lieu of leased property. So where we have a building that we can get state adable work on it and it will be ours for the foreseeable future. Let's reclaim that building, get it stood up, get a program there that is robust and attractive for students and then not have to have as many leased properties or portfolio. There is our some of our specialized programs or at least make sense, but to really significantly reduce the number of leases we turn to, particularly those that are older leases where we're beyond what's state adable. Five year phase projected timeline, that'll be developed over the next several months. Performance contracts for large scopes of work such as our HVAC. We have one an omnia contract with train for a lot of our HVAC work. Smart Bonds Project is an example similar. We are need to look at an energy performance contract and other areas where we can start to develop large scale performance contracts to, to start to knock off some of these needs we have at our buildings. There are some buildings that we've not invested in since reconstruction. Establish a state of the art public facing board welcome and meeting center for the Buffalo Public Schools. We need a place and we need to identify where it will be, where it is a state of the art experience for our staff to welcome families and parents and to city hall is not necessarily the most welcoming environment, nor is it the most accessible for parking. So to have a state of the art public facing board welcome and meeting center for Buffalo Public Schools. Next slide. So we're in the foundational action stage, so I want to unpack that a little bit and I am four minutes over, so I'm going to unpack it in like negative three minutes. Next slide. Removing some high schools. We already moved alternative to 86. Da Vinci is going to, we're looking for six more months at Madonna Hall, then swing to school eight. And that leaves it, that is a vacant site when done and permanently locate at Buckham Hall in Buffalo State campus. Middle Early College swing to a designated site. We're looking at several options there and permanently locate at school 12 or 333 Clinton Street. As you know, if we 333 Clinton Street is performing arts, if we do locate it at school 12, that would mean those services would be have to be moved to 333 Clinton Street. If we keep those services at school 12, we have to figure out a way to improve that facility. And that would not be adable. So research lab 366, it's a swing location at Tri-Man under a lease right now to permanently locate on a, we have been looking at a building on Niagara Street or at school eight. Those are, those are high school moves we need to make. Next slide. We want to invest in the old performing arts. Opened as the first school in New York State to have a completely independent electrical generation and heating system. The original source for Hutch Tech and then later Clinton Middle and then later performing arts. Some of our best programs went through that building. It could be either central registration of that welcoming center or middle early college. We currently have a company that just started a feasibility study there. So their report on it will help us to make those determinations, which part of the RFP asked for not only a site evaluation, but a traffic study and to do various things that could really help us to, to best decide how to strategically use that location. It is currently warehouse space for textbooks, IT and documents. It is one of our best locations to get a semi truck into, which for many of our products, that's, it doesn't happen often, but it does, it is a necessary thing. Public meeting space and potential office space. Gymnasium athletics fields for downtown schools. So we need to invest in there. Now, if we do work there, we may have to have some short term warehouse space for the items at 187. And if we do ever reclaim South Park, maybe even move that to 187, we would need to, while the work is being done and if South Park or I'm sorry, if 28 is identified as a swing school, we would need to work on it when there's nothing in there. So there 333 Clinton Street is a big question mark now, but we're getting a lot closer on it. What is not a question mark is that is a high value, high leverage location for the Buffalo Public Schools and we are not going to let it go. We are not going to let it get on the market or go into play. It will be a high value piece of our puzzle. Next slide. So JS CB, we are looking at those schools for a dual maximum cost allowance, which is a new mechanism that Jennifer Pyle has developed with Syracuse and Rochester for their last joint schools construction. What it allows you to do is do two adable projects in consecutive order. It used to be once you do one, once you get your maximum cost allowance and you spent the money, you cannot go back to the state for five years, which is why during reconstruction, we had buildings, we got a cost allowance. And when we did the construction, we realized we don't have enough money to do the windows. And so we left the windows for five years and then had to come back and replace them. This allows us to do two project. Now, once you're done with them, you have to wait 10 years. So it, it still has its complications. The state doesn't like it. It will, it will require a lot of scrutiny from the budget. It is actually in the time that I submitted this slide, and now there has been one possible change that we may be making to this. Instead of 304 being a dual MCA, we are likely to look at school eight as a dual MCA. If they allow us to do the swing school work on it and then turn around and do the work it would take to establish it as a regular school. So we two, two MCA calculations for two separate projects so that both of them will be adable. So we're really looking into that and Jim's trying to find out if once, if we already front the money for these projects, if we're able, if it gets aided, if we're able to pay ourselves back for that. So we're, we're investigating that. The single MCA projects, again, this is based on what came through the building condition survey and also programmatic elements that we can add into these locations. And then after that, our highest need buildings are put in the first cluster. You'll notice one building that was mentioned earlier today, 31 will have multiple levels, probably a dual MCA because it has a significant amount of, of work to do. Phase seven then would be these other buildings. You'll notice that 37 and 195 are mentioned there. We are actually applying for a separate federal grant for those buildings to see if we can do, it's an energy grant that allows for significant building envelope remediation and repairs and inside energy efficiency. And that grant, only three of our buildings would be eligible. It was based on 2,000 census numbers on high, high poverty areas. And only 37 and 195 would be eligible. So we submitted for those two. If those two get approved for that, then we will swap out two other schools and you're, we'll have to do a legislative amendment to do that. And then district wide, security upgrades, energy efficiency and athletics facilities. So when we look at district wide in each of our joint schools construction projects, we've added in district wide projects. Some of them are highly reimbursable. So if we have, let's say we do work at a school and there's an area where a field can be, and we could somehow position it as part of the MCA calculation, then we'll be able to do athletics enhancement then. We do internal gym enhancements, we can do them. But we also can create district wide projects where we finance those projects. And even if they're not reimbursable as highly as the classroom MCA may be, we can still finance them so we're not taking the hit all at once. Security upgrades and energy efficiency, those are highly reimbursable. Those are highly supported by state ed and the athletics fields will be too, but they're a little hard to do. So we're putting in not only fields, but our facilities, our gyms, our pools, our other facilities that are just not quite up to standard. We want every kid to have an experience in their, in their school day and after school with, with high class athletics facilities. Next slide. Next steps is to write the state legislation, which as soon as it's written, we've been working with Jennifer Pyle. We'll be bringing it back for review for everyone. Then a board of education resolution, a common council resolution. And then once those resolutions are passed, we designate the board members. So we're looking at getting the state legislation written over the next couple of weeks and then to bring it to the capital improvement committee and then to bring it to the board. Next slide. It needs to be stressed that at the same time we're doing that, it does not mean those are the only capital projects we have. Those are the large ones that if we didn't finance them to JS CB, if we didn't think innovatively and programmatically, we wouldn't be able to do them. So that's the only way we can do a large chunk of the 360 million. But we will also for other projects go to the same process we always do of saying, we need new windows in this school. It's going to cost us $600,000. We scope out the project based on the building condition survey. We submit it to the state ed. They give us a reimbursement amount. Then once we get that, we put the contract together, do the RFPs, send it to the board. That it can take two years to get a project moving, but that's how we've done business for a very long time. We're getting back to that. So we will also have that process going on in parallel to this. This slide kind of gives you a sense of how we're breaking out the phases. If you notice, it's a smattering of schools from joint schools construction. We are looking to invest in school eight, school 86 with the, with the alternative programming there, either 187 or 12. So three schools that we never have invested in, three of our locations. But other schools have been since JS CB one. The highest need you'll notice many of them are one, but some of our schools in three, four and five also have high needs. So we'll be investing in those schools. Next. And thank you, board members. And thank you particularly those of you who have given up huge chunks of their Monday mornings to sit through our capital improvement planning committees. Are there any questions? Dr. Williams said if I go 15 minutes over, you don't, you don't get to ask any questions. Well.
Hey, just, um, just one question. Committee, committee, are you, you live in the floor? One, one thing I didn't hear, Ms. Mr. Hills was Riverside Stairs.
Well, the Riverside Stairs are actually in the currently budgeted, so we'll be, we'll be working to scope out that project. So I'll, I'll have a better update on a timeline for that. Bennett stairs are, has been the priority for me, but Riverside stairs was approved at the same time. I, I will need to get an exact timeline on that for you. But you know, I love Riverside, so I'll make sure those stairs are taken care of.
Thank you, sir.
We've had a massive amount of information presented. Some of us who are on the capital budget project committee, this is not new. It's been building and building. But I do want to give any board members who have any questions to raise any questions. I know it's a lot to digest, so can we just go in alphabetical order while Sharon just blocked out? Does anyone, how about, does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask?
I have one. Thank you, Mr. Hills, for such a detailed capital budget, capital planning session. It was, it was a lot. But I do have one question. So when we talk about swing schools, particularly for Da Vinci and another school you mentioned, are those high priority? Because I noticed you said six month, in six months, the leases will be done for Da Vinci, for example.
What are you doing there? What are you doing there?
Sorry? Okay.
They're high priority. We, we actually this week are posting at school eight for abatement. And we have an emergency project that we are, we're walking through with contractors on Friday. So that is, that is on warp speed to get school eight ready for Da Vinci. We are hoping to get it ready by September and our goal is to get it ready by September. But our, because we're, we're not careless, we're also working to have a backup plan of, of seeing if we can get extra time at the GVO campus.
Okay, perfect. I like that. I like that very much. And I, I have a bias toward school eight because that's the school I went to years ago and I pass it all the time and it's just sitting there and I'm thinking, what in the heck is going on? So I like the idea. Thank you.
We had a good meeting last night, I think, with the parents and the staff over at Da Vinci. You know, there were some concerns, you know, that some of the parents brought up, but at the same time, there were parents in the audience that spoke up so positively about the plan that we didn't have to really, you know, it, it, you know, it was parent to parent talking about, you know, you know, that it's a brick and mortar. It's what's, what's happening inside the school that's the magic. And, you know, just talking about how, you know, it is a neighborhood that's a residential neighborhood and that some of the children who they were talking about, you know, they live in that neighborhood. And so when you start talking about this isn't safe and we don't feel safe there, you know, we got some good feedback, but we had, I think, a really, really good meeting and I think everybody left feeling okay with, you know, with the plan.
And, and that's what parents, those parents wanted. They needed something, something, you know, succinct that they know in September or whenever that this is the plan, solid plan. So thank you.
Any other board members have questions? And I see you, Natalie.
I have a question. It's Terry. David, I'd like to have a conversation with you in regards to the Park District. There was talk during the former Dr. Williams about having quadrants and making sure that there were facilities in each quadrant of the city. And I'm concerned that South Park High School, who I'm a little partial to, does not have a practice facility or really just limited green space for their football program. And so I'd like to have that conversation at some point to see. We do have an, there is a field down the street from us. It is a private field and perhaps we can start that discussion.
I, I think that, that is a discussion we've already started to have. You know, there is behind South Side, I think it's called McGovern Field. There is, there's no place, unless we get a couple houses torn down close to South Park that could be accommodate a full scale field. But if we look at what Madai College did, where they built a facility, it was essentially in the middle of an industrial area. I, I think we have, we have world class athletics programs at multiple schools and we want to do what we, to support all of them. And I definitely agree and I would love to have that conversation.
I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
When I do talk to Dr. Williams about the athletics subcommittee, I also, you may be interested in that, too.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other board members want to ask the question? No? Wonderful. Well, then I'll give it to you for closing remarks, Madam Superintendent.
It's late and you know, that was a lot. That was a lot to digest. I'm not going to try to add on top of anything that Chief Hills has shared. You know, just when you have time to just take a little time and marinate back over the PowerPoint. And if you have any questions, certainly you can always reach out to him or myself. But I think it demonstrates the commitment and that he's doing a lot. There's a lot of moving. There's a lot of moving parts that are happening at the same time.
Okay, this, then this closes out financing operations and I pass the baton to Dr. Kathy Evans Brown, Chairman of Executive Affairs.
Thank you, Chairman Wood. It's late, guys. Welcome to the executive affairs work session. As noted in previous sessions, we talked about giving some time for a discussion about negotiations for our employees, called our teachers and educators. So we want them to know that we want to be fair. We want to settle with them. So I'll sit now to Dr. Williams, who will introduce our counsel.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Evans Brown. Our chief counsel, Mr. Kuzma, I know it's late and I know, you know, we've talked about some pretty heavy topics, but you know, he's coming forward with another really important topic that I know that we're all wanting to hear a little bit more about. And so, you know, I asked that we just give him our attention. And I know he's going to be concise and to the point because that's how Mr. Kuzma is. So Kuzma, I'll turn things over to you at this point.
Yeah, usually, and thank you, Dr. Williams. I've been up the past four hours drinking coffee, so I'm all fired up. I'm ready for a few more hours. So we're, we're just getting started. But no, thank you, Dr. Williams and board members. I'm going to be intentionally vague or general, I would say, and then ask the board to go into executive session where I'd ask Dr. Williams and Ms. Holly McGee and David Hill, Mr. Hills to stay back to discuss some topics with you and cover this issue a little bit more in depth.
Jim Barnes, not David Hills.
Yeah, and David Hills, and David Hills. Yeah, David Hills will need to be there. So, you know, since we've received the Fact Finders Report on June 30th, you know, and we had some, you know, a board meeting, the board spoke on the issue. We've met with the Federation on four occasions. We've, you know, there still is some distance between us. You know, but I am optimistic, you know, that we are getting near the end. You know, we certainly, you know, as a district have extended, you know, our, our best, you know, to our teachers in trying to strike a deal. And we have two meetings scheduled next Monday and next Tuesday. We've, you know, the superintendent has, has set aside her day. I've set aside my day. Our negotiating team, Ms. Holly McGee has set aside her day as is Mr. Barnes, you know, to try to bring this matter to some finality. And I hope that we have good news to report next week on this issue. You know, but as I said, there's, there's still some work to be done, you know, on our end. In an executive session, I'm certainly going to seek feedback from the board. If not, we have a meeting next Wednesday. You know, at which point, you know, if we do not have an agreement, you know, I will be prepared at that point in time, you know, to, to brief the public, the board more fully, you know, on where things are at this point in time. So with that, I would respectfully ask that the board, I've sent a motion to Dr. Evans Brown, who's the chair in this meeting, and also to the board president, Ms. Felton Kotman, to go into executive session so we can talk a little bit more fully on this issue and a few other, few other issues.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Yes, yes, please, Dr. Evans Brown.
All right. So may I have a motion to go into executive session for the following purposes. Number one, to discuss the potential lease of real property. Number two, to discuss collective negotiations with the BTF. And number three, to receive legal advice. Sharon Kotman. Thank you, Sharon. And second by Paulette.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any exceptions? No exceptions, so to speak.
Everybody, everybody except Mr. Hills, Ms. Holly McGee, Superintendent, obviously.
Five seconds will be live. Five seconds. Run.
Okay, so we're back. We went into executive session for the following purposes. One, to discuss the potential lease of real property. Two, to discuss collective negotiations with BFT. And three, to receive legal action. No action was taken.
BTF.
BTF. What did I say? No action taken. So we move to close out the meeting?
We're done. You don't need a motion to adjourn.
All right. That concludes our meeting.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning.
Good meeting.